Good evening. It is July 12, 2022, and I'm now going to call to order the special meeting of call the special with the URB and Murak meeting to order. We're going to be having a public hearing regarding Third Street Improvement Project Phase C. Is our planning director on the line, on the call? Okay, if we could please call on Planning Director Heather Richards to give a presentation of the proposal. Thank you.
Would love to, Mayor. I'm wondering, the city recorder asked me if we would do a roll call. Claudia, do you still want to do that?
Yes, please. So I'll start with Council. Council Gary.
Good evening.
Council Minky.
I'm present.
Council Chenoweth.
Here.
Council Payne.
Present.
Council President Garvin is not on the line. Council Peralta is absent this evening, and I have a statement from him. I hope this note finds each of you well. Oh, just kidding. I am not able to attend tonight's meeting due to family obligations related to my grandmother's passing and funeral, so he will not be here tonight. And interim Mayor Dravken.
I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, I'll do a roll call for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee.
Okay, before you start, can we try to turn Heather's volume up for inside council chambers? I think it would be difficult to hear her at the time of presentation. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, and if I need to turn my volume up on my end, let me know. I had a major update on my computer last night that changed all my features, so.
Yeah, if you could give that a try, Heather. We have it, we have you turned up here, so I think it might be on your side.
Okay, is that better?
It's about the same.
Excellent. So Scott, I want to turn up my microphone, right?
That did it.
Much better. That's great. Thank you.
Sorry about that, everyone. Okay, so roll call for McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee members. Chair Walt Gao.
Here.
I'm assuming he's there.
Here.
Kelly McDonald is on Zoom.
I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Morris.
Here.
Jamie Korf.
Here.
Ed Gormley is absent. Jeff Knapp is absent. Lisa Poole is absent, and Alan Fox is absent. Peter Kircher is also absent. We have a lot of vacations in COVID in Murak right now, so thank you for those who are attending. Okay, with that, Mayor and Councilors, in your role as Urban Renewal Board members and the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee members, I wanted to bring to you a presentation on what we call Phase C of our Third Street Improvement Project. I apologize that I'm not there. My daughter had surgery this morning and struggled with the anesthesia, so I'm here at home with her. But we, Matt Arnold from Sierra Architects is there as well, and he and I are going to tag team this. I'd like to introduce it to you, so I'm going to share my screen to do so. So the scope of this project is five phases. There's Phase A, B, C, D, and E, and we've been working our way through them over the last several years. We started with Phase A in 2018 with vision, goals, and design principles to sort of create a framework for our dialogue for this project. And then just recently in 2021 and 2022, we've been working through Phase B and C, which is really the concept design. The concept design is a design that we're going to bring into engineering, where we start to really sort of truth test everything and do the engineering work and the reports and the analysis and see what works and what doesn't work. But it's a means of getting through some decision-making milestones for the community so that when we're in the engineering process, we're able to move that forward. Phase B was initial concept design. We brought that to City Council and the Murak Committee on May 10, and got direction to move that forward and refine it a little bit further. That is Phase C, and that's what we're bringing to you tonight. Phase D and E are engineering and construction documents. Those are the larger phases of the project, and those will be next based on City Council direction. The study area for this project is Adams to Johnson on Third Street. That's about 10 blocks that we're looking at, but the concept design is really just focused on what a prototype block would look like, and it's not actually, hasn't actually featured into any of the individual blocks. That will all be done during the engineering phase when we get out and survey each block individually. I want to recap a little bit about Phase A with the vision, goals, and design principles. We put together a project advisory committee, which was comprised of both a citizen advisory committee that had downtown stakeholders, business owners and property owners, and community members at large participating on that citizen advisory committee, and then we had a technical advisory committee as well. They, the two groups make up the project advisory committee. They worked for about a year on creating a vision for Third Street, so what will this look like moving forward and how does it serve the community? I won't go through that. It's a long vision, but really focuses on the fact that this is the heart of McMinnville, and it's also both quirky and classy, and so that's what sets it aside opposed, compared to other downtowns, and we wanted to make sure we moved that forward. The group also came up with project goals and objectives. I won't go through those in detail, but I just wanted to reiterate them to you because this is what our filter is for each step of this project. So one goal is to reinforce and celebrate McMinnville's unique and welcoming identity, and there's a lot of discussion in there about the quirky character and maintaining that, integrating public art into the streetscape, and also having cohesive furnishing materials and color palettes that sort of serve as the frame for that quirkiness in public art piece. We also want to strengthen the prosperity of local businesses. So when we look at the design of Third Street, the public right of way and how it's designed, we want to make sure it's supporting our local business and business community. The functionality of it in that regard is a priority. So looking at how the sidewalk areas and the seating and the lighting provide access to the businesses was really an important part of this dialogue. We want to ensure safety for all users and connectivity throughout downtown. This is really a focus on, you know, making sure we're looking at all modes of transportation while prioritizing pedestrians. We want to make sure downtown is accessible for all of our citizens. We want to look, we did make a decision, we wanted to maintain the mid-block crossings in Phase A as that provided that sort of pedestrian focus as well. We want to choose durable, long-lasting solutions that allow for efficient construction and effective maintenance, and this has been part of the discussion as well as we've gone through this process. We've looked at how do we do a comprehensive phasing strategy with our business owners and contractors so that we're minimizing construction impacts on business, and that will be in the next two phases in terms of dialogue. And then we also want to make sure that we're not only fixing the infrastructure, but we're improving on it and expanding it so that we can meet both current and future needs, and that we're also doing it in a way that's adaptive and flexible. We want to foster a range of events for citizens and visitors alike. There was a lot of discussion about how do we continue to utilize the street for great events like dine outside so that it's easy and convenient to shut down the street to vehicles and really create a community event atmosphere downtown. And we want to facilitate a robust public engagement process that engages the entire community. So we talked about transparent design and decision-making process. We talked about engaging a complete cross-section of stakeholders. That's the project advisory committee. It was very intentionally put together, and we talked about a mix of engagement activities, so meetings, open houses, workshops, virtual type of activities, and then social media. We had design principles that we put together. It focuses on the fact that Third Street is of the people and for the people. It's safe, inclusive, and accessible. It's a public space. It's an integral part of the downtown. It's the heart of the downtown. It will be, the success will rely on public and private partnerships. It's always evolving, and it embraces change as it evolves. We're actively geared towards early implementation of, early implementation-oriented improvements, so how can we do these in a way that's sooner rather than later? And then a sustainable environment and keeping that quirky and unique characteristic of Third Street. So we brought that to City Council in 2019, and in your role as the Urban Renewal Board, and got the authority to move forward based on that vision, goals, and principles. And then COVID happened, and we put a pause on it. And as we came out of COVID, we started talking about the need to re-energize this project, especially with the fact that there are federal infrastructure funds that will be available in a way that they have never been available before, and we don't anticipate will be available again. And we thought this project was a great match for those funds, so we wanted to get this into a place where we could apply for them and bring those types of funds into the community to be able to pay for this project. So we started working on concept design Phase B and Phase C. With that, I wanted to share a little bit about the history of the discussion for the Third Street Improvement Project because the concept design really builds upon about 20 years of dialogue in this community of how to move forward with designing a new and improved Third Street. So in 2000, there was a downtown improvement plan. In 2005, there was a downtown streetscape plan that built upon that. In 2010, there was an aspect of the McMinnville Transportation System Plan that talked about the Third Street Improvement Project. In 2013, we adopted it into the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan to create a funding mechanism for the project. And then in 2017, the Urban Renewal Agency identified it as a priority project in their five-year work plan. This is an example of the 2000 Downtown Improvement Plan. At that time, Third Street as an aspect of it was called out, that it's the identifiable center of the city, ensuring that the street is successful, both functionally and aesthetically is important to the health of the entire downtown. Planned improvements include replace the street trees over a period of years with tree species that do not damage the sidewalks, upgrade street furnishings with lighting and pavement, and reconstruct the mid-block crossings for pedestrians. In 2005, a group got together and sort of took that direction from the 2000 plan and started detailing it a little bit more. And out of that process, it was interesting when I went back to this because much of what you're going to hear tonight builds upon this concept project. So this is the prototype block that came out of that process. It talks about raised planter beds here near the mid-block crossings. It talks about streetlights with custom bench surrounding and street signage that matches the existing downtown historic district look. It talks about open tree wells, all existing trees, and then replacing with 48-inch squared tree grates when trees are replanted or rotated. It talks about existing trees will remain until they're rotated out for new trees, and it talks about the trees that need to be removed to support the project. The trees that need to be removed to support the project was right here at the intersection, all the trees at the bulbouts, because all these bulbouts were meant to be reconstructed. In 2010, we put it into our Transportation System Plan as a means of sort of setting the stage for future funding, much like the discussion of going for the federal infrastructure funds. You have to have it in your transportation plan as a priority project to be able to apply for grants in other places. We at that time identified what the issues were downtown, many of the same issues that exist today still, and then we identified the different types of recommendations in terms of the improvements that were required. So there's been a lot of dialogue recently about the trees downtown, and I just wanted to address that very quickly before Matt shared what the Phase C concept plan is that built on that history dialogue. So we all knew going into this project that the hardest component of the project would be the dialogue related to the trees. Everyone in McMinnville loves the Third Street trees. I want to make sure everyone understands that. We all love them. And the goal of the project advisory committee is to save as many of the existing trees as possible. They stated that at the beginning, and they've continued to state that as we go through this process. So I want to make sure I repeat that because there's some misinformation. The goal of the project advisory committee is to save as many of the existing trees as possible. But we want to be honest. We don't want to have any aha moments as we go through this process. This is a community dialogue, and we all need to be honest about the decisions we're making. So there is inherent conflict in terms of the construction project and the trees and saving the trees, and we need to be honest about what that is as we're making decisions. So some of the inherent conflicts are the trees are lifting the sidewalks, and they're creating accessibility issues. So in ADA law, you can't have more than a quarter inch of allowance for a gap in your pedestrian space. I encourage you when you're walking downtown on Third Street, you know, in the next coming days and weeks, look down at the sidewalk and look at all the places where there is more than a quarter inch of a gap. That's where the cracks are or where you have a lift. Now, you can have a half an inch if the edges are treated appropriately, and then you have the right slope. And so where you see some trees that have lifted sidewalks, we try to go in and grind down the roots, grind down the concrete, and get to that half-inch edge with the right slope. But we're at the place where we can't do that anymore. We have many places in the downtown area where property owners have come to the city and said, we would like to remove these trees. They're lifting the sidewalks. There is liability for us if the property owner, and eventually probably also the city, if somebody trips and hurts themselves. It is the property owner's responsibility, and the city will more than likely be part of the lawsuit as well. And so the property owner wants to take care of their liability, so they're asking to either remove the tree or to come up with some sort of solution where they can replace the sidewalk in such a way that they don't have that liability anymore. We've brought contract, concrete contractors downtown to look at all the areas where this is occurring to see if there's any means of getting around it without having to remove the trees, and the concrete contractors all get back to us, you just are not going to meet ADA if you're looking at repairing the sidewalks as is. If we want to keep the trees that are lifting the sidewalks, then what we would need to do is lift all the sidewalks and raise them up. But we're also dealing with a historic downtown where we have entry thresholds that are adjacent to the sidewalks. So when you're walking downtown, I encourage you to look at those as well. And what that means is that's the front door to the business and how much of a rise you have into that front door from the sidewalk, because we also have to make sure that we're not sending water into the buildings when we have storm events. We suspect that most of the trees are shallow-rooted based on past experience, so we have removed some trees, and they've been, they've all been shallow-rooted. They've all had roots that are migrating in sort of the top 18 inches of the soil because that's where they're finding space to get to water. The roots are not going down. So there's any sort of sidewalk and street construction could compromise those roots. We would have to cut them, and that would create stability issues. Now, you can cut some roots, but if you cut a lot of the roots of the tree, you're creating a stability situation, which then becomes a public safety hazard. Some recent tree removals also showed that the roots were damaging building foundations and infrastructure as well, and so we are concerned that when we pull up the street and the sidewalks, what we're going to discover there. So the existing conditions for a typical block for trees, and this is assuming that all the trees are in the tree wells, which they are not, we have many missing trees right now, is we have about eight on each side. So you have two at each bulbout, and then you have about five that carry on down the street like this. We have two types of trees downtown. We have maples and lindens, so we don't have just one single type of tree. We have two. We have a dominance of maple trees, and then we have two types of growth patterns downtown in terms of trees, which have been deliberately chosen, that are both columnar and then canopy trees. The columnar trees, if you look at the downtown when you're walking down in the next couple of days and weeks, are the trees that are not in the bulbouts. So they're the trees that are just along the sidewalk in the tree wells, and then the canopy trees are the trees that are in the mid-block crossing and in the bulbouts at the intersections. We hired Stephen Getz, who's an urban arborist, and he's here with us tonight and has been with us throughout this whole project discussion, to assess each individual tree on Third Street in 2018 when we started this project, and we had him assess them again in 2020 after the storm before we started the concept design, and that assessment is in your packet. And he discovered that the trees are, for the most part, I would say, in fair or good condition. There are some that are in poor condition, and there are many trees that have been removed, but for the most part, they were in fair and good condition. So the PAC is not, the PAC, the Project Advisory Committee is not recommending clear cutting of all of the trees. They are actually recommending to save as many as possible, but they don't want the community to think that we can save them all if we get into a construction project and we can't do so. So that's what we're looking at. The Project Advisory Committee is also not recommending replanting with one and a half inch or two-inch caliber twigs. From the beginning of this project, they have discussed working with a nursery to grow larger trees for the project that are three or four inches in caliber, once it is known what is needed in terms of number of trees for this project. The reason why we're looking at three to four inches of caliber and not five or six inches of caliber, and for those who don't know, caliber is the dimension of the tree trunk, is because once you get to a certain size of tree, when you replant it, it's more traumatic for it in terms of the replanting, and you are able to, and more, more of them do not survive the replanting. So generally, most arborists and landscape architects will recommend not going higher than a four-inch caliber tree for replanting. Now, in 2018, we had, at the Taylor Dale Rehab Project, they removed a mature tree without approval. So all trees downtown cannot be removed unless they have been approved previously with a permit, and since they did not have a permit to remove it, we put them into code enforcement. And there was a pretty hefty fine associated with removing the mature tree. At the time, we'd started this discussion for the project, so we said, let's invest that fine money into sort of a demonstration project so that we can plant some trees in different ways to see how they respond in the environment and what they look like in a couple of years when we knew we would be going into engineering for this project. So there were three trees on Third Street that were replaced and two on Ford Street. We asked them to replace them with four-inch caliber trees in 2019. We asked them to put in a root area that's 48 inches deep, that's four feet, that's much deeper than what we do today, so the premise behind that is to try to force those roots downward so that they're not going in a shallow horizontal way. And then we also looked at, could we do structural soil plantings with these trees? We did a full evaluation with an engineering team, and Stephen Getz. We decided not to do that for a variety of different reasons, which I'm happy to share at some point in time, but we did decide that all the trees need to be in four feet by six-foot tree wells so that they had enough room to breathe. So these, this is a sample shot of those trees. I went down there today to take a shot of them because there's been a lot of discussion of what will the trees look like in a couple of years? So keep in mind, these are four-inch caliber trees when they were first planted three years ago. So this is a good example of what they would look like, but it's also a good example that four-inch caliber trees are hard to plant in such a way that you don't lose some of them, and it looks like we've lost one of those, and we're going to be visiting with them about that here shortly. But it shows how tall it's grown against the building. When you're walking downtown, I encourage you to come down to this block and walk around and just get a feel for it, to see how big those trees are and what they feel like for you after three years of being planted in the ground. So with that said, what we're looking for tonight is the Project Advisory Committee is making a recommendation for you about the concept design that's come out of Phase C. That concept design is just that, it's conceptual, and we want to take it into an engineering phase, and the engineering phase, it will probably get tweaked and revised and refined as we truth test it, as we do some analysis, as we figure out exactly what we're looking at in terms of the details. But to move into the next phase, we need direction from your body as a group. Is it time to move to that next phase? That next phase will entail selecting a design and engineering team to engineer the project. The expected timeframe for that is about nine to 12 months. It's probably the most expansive part of this project, where we'll be investing the most money and time because it is where we're doing all the analysis, and the anticipated costs are $650,000 to $800,000, and this was the ARPA funds that we had discussed with City Council previously in terms of investment. So with that, I'd like to introduce Matthew Arnold from Sierra Architects and Stephen Getz from Pacific Resources Group. Stephen is the urban arborist who's been working with us on this project for the last four years, more or less. He has a lot of experience on trees and urban environments, and Matthew Arnold is the Director of Planning and Urban Design at Sierra Architects.
Great. Thank you, Heather. I will seize control of the screen for a moment. Bear with me. Great, and thank you again, Heather, for the context there. It's very, very important and much appreciated. And thank you all for having us back. I would like to just let you know upfront that this work that you're about to see represents not only the work of my firm, you know, Sierra Architects, as Heather mentioned, Steve Getz, but also our Project Advisory Committee and members of the public who weighed in through a variety of, a variety of means. We really do feel like this is a representation of a lot of people's work, not just, not just ours. Obviously, Third Street, as Heather just went over, is the heart of the, of the community, right? It's this incredible historic district that it has commemorative plaques and things that hold a lot of your history, literally in, in writing. Third Street today is designed for automobiles. Fully sort of two-thirds of the street are given over to vehicle movement and storage, whereas just about a third of it is for, for people and for commerce. As Heather has mentioned, at length, the sidewalks are suffering these days largely due to the, due to the trees. They're in various conditions. They've been patched in various ways with different materials, so both from a maintenance standpoint and a design perspective, there's, they're a bit of a mess in some spots. The stormwater is an issue. We obviously just had one of the rainiest winters and springs on record, so no doubt you saw a lot of puddling and ponding. So there are issues to be solved. Just wanted to put that into the record for framing. So you understand the process that we have been in, and you've been a part of this. This conceptual design phase has gone on since December. We have met with our Project Advisory Committee now seven times. We have met with our TAC, our Technical Advisory Committee, seven times as well. We've had a couple of community forums. The most recent was on June 21st. We've had two online surveys, and the city has also hosted a number of information sessions about the project for, for folks who are not able to attend our, our community forums. So just to give you that overview of the outreach. So just to give you that overview of the outreach and involvement that's occurred to date. With that, there have been a number of decisions that we've worked through, just in that brief, you know, seven or eight-month period. We have worked on the cross-section for the roadway, how it should function, the street trees, as we'll get into in depth. Obviously, a lot of discussion there. How the mid-block curb extensions should work, incredibly important, not only for the street trees, but also for some of the civic life that will occur in those spaces, our approach to furnishings and fixtures, and roadway and sidewalk materials. Each one of those points, just at a very high level, required a sort of a great deal of discussion, both with our Project Advisory Committee and with members of the public. I'll get this to advance here. Through our surveys, and we had updated you all just a couple of months back on some of this work at our midpoint, we had support generally for a grove approach to the trees, so using a different street tree approach than currently exists, as long as we can maintain the tunnel effect, for which McMinnville, downtown McMinnville is so famous. But there was great support for mixing some species up, instead of having the two species that are there now, introducing some additional variety, even flowering trees and conifers in very discreet ways. There was some support for offsetting our curb extensions, utilizing raised planters, in other words, including some of those same elements that the community has been discussing these last 15 or 20 years, as Heather mentioned in her opening presentation. At the same time, folks were very clear that they wanted to balance that historic nature with the quirky and unique aspects, therefore using both historic fixtures and including opportunities for functional art. And folks generally wanted to maintain flexibility of the space over time. As we mentioned, one of those design principles is an ever-evolving streetscape, and I think our committee members and the members of the public recognize that Third Street today will be one thing, but it may be something very different in 10 years or 15 years or 30 years. Maintaining some flexibility within that design was important. The overall functional design, just to be clear, you have a 60-foot-wide right-of-way. As I mentioned, two-thirds of it right now are for automobiles, and one-third is for pedestrians. This person-centered Main Street idea to the function was really key to our work, using the layout that you have now, but finding ways to improve upon it. The way we've done that is by narrowing the travel lanes, reducing some of the on-street parking, and devoting more of that space to pedestrians and to other sort of activities, commercial activity that might occur on the sidewalks. So in this diagram here, this summarizes some of those major functional moves. Again, the narrowing of the roadway. All the areas that you see there in pink are areas of the current roadway that will, in the future, be devoted to sidewalk area. So areas, again, for pedestrian movement, for public art, for trees, et cetera. One of the recommendations that has come out of our Project Advisory Committee, in addition to making sure that there's continued enough parking available throughout downtown, and that is a key recommendation for not only from our Project Advisory Committee, but from members of the public as well, is also making sure that we have enough bicycle parking. So one of the recommendations we're making, we haven't included it in our current design, because, again, we've only designed, as Heather said, to a typical block, but would be to look for opportunities for bike corrals, where you can do significant amounts of on-street bike parking at select locations within downtown as part of the next phase of design. With that, let's dive into the street trees for a moment. As I mentioned upfront, through our lengthy process with our Project Advisory Committee, as well as gaining input from the community, the street tree pattern that we've settled on changes the pattern from what we might call marching soldiers, where trees are placed on a regular spacing up and down the street, as they are today. And we should be clear, recognizing that the street trees today are suffering in a variety of ways, as Heather covered upfront. And maybe I'll just quickly recap this. Forgive me, I forgot these slides are here. As Heather mentioned, the roots are very shallow, there are some concerns. We just wanted to include some imagery for that, for the record, of what that means. And that canopy trees in particular, and we know how important it is to maintain the tunnel effect, recognizing that canopy trees in particular need a lot of room, they do better when they can really sort of spread their branches. Moving those sidewalks out and concentrating those trees in curb extensions is key to our strategy. So with that, let me lay out a couple of those design principles. We want to make sure that we have a diverse streetscape with those street trees, that we're able to utilize those to highlight and frame the historic architecture, which really is one of the defining features of your community. The tunnel effect, as I've mentioned. We can provide you with all the public comments that we received from both surveys. There are literally dozens of pages, and a lot of it is actually devoted to the importance of streetlights and twinkle lights, which we just wanted to let you know, just how much people care about that overall aesthetic of downtown. So making sure that a street tree strategy works with that lighting is important. Although we make sure that we're working with some ecological diversity, but also making sure that the street tree species are selected specifically for an urban environment. We know that some trees don't do as well, that some can heave the sidewalks more and can suffer within an urban context. So making sure that we really tailor the right trees. And that we're able to balance out that mixing, as I mentioned earlier, there's an interest in really mixing the species, that there's combinations of seasonal interests and contrast with those trees, so that they're not just a single look, but that either flowers, bark, changing leaves over the seasons provides visual interest at different times of the year. So that's our sort of starting point for the design. What we've come up with, as I mentioned, is this grove concept that utilizes those larger curb extensions, both at the intersections and at the mid-block, to concentrate those street trees and to mix those species in, both to provide shade, but also visual interest. And you can see a couple of images here, including how by providing some of those gaps between those groves allows some additional view to those historic buildings that are, again, are so special to McMinnville. We should be clear that some of the inspiration for the tree selection and for the pattern of its arrangement comes from what we're calling an open mountain woodland context that both plays off the types of ground plantings that might be included, as well as the species selection for the trees. Are there examples of where this approach has been used in downtowns? Honestly, not many. There are a few. There's Grand Junction, Colorado, for example. There are a couple of streets in Seattle. But this would be a fairly interesting and unique approach to street trees, specifically for McMinnville. One of the things that we're excited about with this context, or with this concept, I should say, is that it allows trees to function at a variety of levels, that you can have an overstory, a midstory, and an understory with plantings, using trees of varying heights to play off of each other. The example trees that you see here are just that, they're examples. We have not selected specific trees. That would be part of the process that Heather mentioned coming up next in that engineering phase, to make those final recommendations. But to give you an idea of some of the kinds of trees that could be included, whether it's a combination of deciduous trees, conifers used sparingly, most likely in those mid-block curb extensions, accented by some flowering trees, not too many. We know that flowering trees can be a bit of a problem with the litter that they provide onto sidewalks, but again, in an accented way. When you zoom into those mid-block curb extensions, you're kind of now looking through the trees at this image. You can just see how those kind of lay out. There are raised planters, which we'll show you some images of in just a moment. There are at-grade planting areas as well. There are flexible areas for furnishings and public art. And there's also an adjustment to those mid-block crossings. Today, they cross at an angle. We've heard from community members that that is uncomfortable and a bit of an issue. So we have been able to adjust the design to allow for perpendicular mid-block crossing. And just to give you an idea of what that looks like in perspective, you can see that those raised planters, which had a lot of support from community members from our survey, do have built-in benches, and that there are opportunities, again, for fixtures and art. We're showing a water fountain here that could just as easily be another bench, a piece of public art, et cetera. And to just give some idea of what those things look like from different perspectives, we've tried to include as many rendered shots from different spots along the street to get a sense of what those planting areas would look like. You can see that there's a mix of shaded areas, dappled shade with sun breaks. This is us obviously looking at that mid-block crossing again. Again, I mentioned that the tunnel effect is key to our design. It's key to the way your street is now, and it's also very important to the public. So we have chosen to plant trees in certain ways, specifically those deciduous trees, at those curb extensions, such that they will, at full growth, touch in the middle of the street, as many of your trees do today. You can see that there are breaks. You can see in this rendering to the sunlight at the third points of the block, but that they do have a tunnel effect when you look down the whole street. Again, we thought that was a very important and distinctive feature that you have today. Heather talked quite a bit about, you know, how do you establish these trees for long-term success? We want you to know that we agree that taking that time and probably the capital expense upfront to really ensure the longevity of the trees over, you know, over the long term is important. There are several different techniques to do that. It can be structural soil, it can be soil cells, there are a number of systems and products that we really feel should be evaluated in that 30% design scenario to make sure that they really do have that longevity. We should say that with this grove, this grove strategy, some of these systems actually have a greater chance of success, because you're working with larger areas than handling it on a tree well-by-tree-well basis. So we really think there's some great value there. And as I mentioned, when we get to the question-and-answer stage, we do have Steve Getz here who can talk quite a bit more about urban street trees. To show you what this looks like on a typical block, again, we have not deployed this concept for all the blocks in the study area, but to show you how a typical one works, again, those mid-block curb extensions and crossings are kind of the key to it with those raised planters and seating. Those curb extensions are offset. That was something that we heard from community members that was important in one of our surveys. But again, those mid-block crossings will be perpendicular. There are groves at the intersections as well. They are a bit smaller, but they do also incorporate opportunities for, again, bike racks, public art, et cetera. There are streetlights, both at the intersections and at that mid-block area. And we've made sure with the design, and again, this is a benefit of having those wider sidewalks, that there will be plenty of room for commercial activity, including outdoor dining, which we know is absolutely key to the success and economic vitality of Third Street. I was shown here in a perspective, just a highlight of those tree groves and how they work, again, with that mix of height and species types. Just a quick display of what furnishings and fixtures could be. Again, the streetlights occur both at the intersections and in the mid-block. The community voiced a preference for both the crookarm historic fixtures as well as acorns. So our recommendation is to include the crookarm lights at the intersections and those acorn lights at the mid-block. There are historic bike racks that folks had weighed in on. There are additional benches in addition to those that are built into those planters. This is a typical arrangement. Our recommendation would be, obviously, to tailor this on a block-by-block basis, based on where entrances and driveways and things are, but also to work with business owners and property owners to make sure that the placement of these various features will work for their business operations as well. We will know that, just one small piece, that there are standalone planters, much as you have today. It's a planter that the community had voted for in this very simple black metal design. You can place those in a certain way to help align and give a visual cue for parking. So just know that that's part of the arrangement there. And again, just to give you a sense of what this all looks like when it comes together. So we'll just quickly flip through a few of these renderings before getting on to some of the other aspects of the design. So here we are at the...
Mr. Arnold, I'm sorry to interrupt really quickly. I just do want to check in with you about time. I know we have seven people signed up for a public hearing, and we do have a council meeting that will have to start at seven. So if you could just, in your presentation, maybe wrap up in the next seven minutes or so, so we have adequate time for council discussion and public hearing. I would appreciate it.
Sure thing.
Thank you so much.
Sure. So we're looking here at the mid-block. Again, just sort of a version from the sidewalk. Again, just to give you all a sense of it, here are the intersections, where you can also see trash and recycling cans, placed for convenience. Again, there are those planters that would help define some of the parking areas on the left side there. Just a view from the middle of the road, what does a driver sort of experience as they move down the street. And again, showing outdoor dining. This would be the bare minimum required, right in the middle, four feet wide for pedestrians to get through. We do have plenty of space for that minimum, and in some areas, that sidewalk would get significantly wider, depending on the exact placement of outdoor dining and commercial activity. We've also peeled back those raised planters a little bit to make sure that there is some room to work around dining and commercial activity. Very quickly on paving treatments, there are a variety of zones that we need to think about when thinking about paving materials for both the sidewalk and the roadway. The community had a strong preference for concrete within the roadway. We are recommending that to move forward. Generally, sort of, concrete sidewalks, potentially using a different color concrete for the crosswalks to further call those out. And then using accent pavers within the curb extensions as a way to differentiate those zones. As I mentioned, the community has voiced a preference for concrete. We are recommending that that proceed, but be revisited in 30% design, based both on feasibility as well as cost at the time of construction. Community actually voiced no preference in terms of curbs. So this is a small recommendation we're saying that should be picked up in the next one. Whether it's a 12-inch curb or a 6-inch curb has no material difference to the function of the roadway and is an aesthetic choice that should be revisited in the next round. Similarly, raised crosswalks, the technical advisory committee feels like there are some safety benefits of raised crosswalks for raising the visibility of pedestrians and providing safer sightlines for drivers. But maybe these are included on some, but not all of the blocks. Just some information there for later perusal. We're also recommending that the city work with the McMinnville Downtown Association and business owners on some policy work regarding exactly where and how commercial activity should occur on the sidewalk, to make sure that we are providing enough room for pedestrians in a safe environment, and whether those activities are located next to the buildings, next to the cars, or even in the curb extensions, that that policy work is still in your future. The accent pavers we're recommending, we want to make sure that folks understand, we are recommending a flush paver with as tight joints as possible to both be compliant with the ADA, but also just general safety and comfort and the long-term maintenance. There are opportunities to include additional pavers and maybe even some street tree grates in a couple of areas. We've laid out an analysis of where those could occur. We believe this is a design choice. It's a fairly minor one, but has there are some interesting benefits, as well as some costs, to be honest, and that this also be further examined within that next round of design. To really quickly move through the furnishings and fixtures, we covered a lot of this with you all back in May. The community clearly voted for a historic materials palette, combinations of metal wood, the accent pavers that I mentioned earlier. Most of those fixtures are laid out here, as you've seen them previously in this deck. We're also recommending, based on, again, community preference as well, that we include recycling cans in addition to trash cans in this next round of this work. And then possibly functional art be included as well for some of the trash cans, and maybe even some other pieces, such as the occasional bike rack, planter, or bench, again, to really play off that quirky and unique feel that is so important to downtown McMinnville. We're recommending that those memorial plaques and commemorative plaques that exist today be subject to a process led probably by MDA, but also including stakeholders and community members to determine where those should go in the future, how those should be incorporated, and how future plaques may be incorporated into the streetscape. That a similar process be undertaken for decorative lighting. We feel that as those trees grow over time, there are ways to sort of change up the lighting based on their maturity, as well as even tying lighting into building frontages to provide seasonal interest and/or for special events. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Would love to be able to take any questions, but as you said, there's also testimony, so I'll be quiet now.
Wonderful. Well, Mr. Arnold, thank you very much for all of your work on this project as a whole, and also your presentation tonight, and especially addressing some of the concerns that have come up in the community. So we'll have a chance for more discussion later on, but at this moment, does any Urban Renewal Board or MURAC member have questions of staff, specifically? Questions to staff? Yes, Councilor Kennewith?
Yeah, I'm kind of, I appreciate the presentation and all that you've put forth. I know you guys have put a lot of work together to get it to this point, but I'm kind of confused because Heather... because Heather, our planter, expressed the desire to save as many of the existing trees as possible. But then when I look at the design that's being recommended to us, I don't see the existing trees being saved. So maybe you could address that so I can understand where that's going to happen.
Yeah. The answer, Councilor Trenowith, is we actually don't know where that's going to happen, and even if it can happen. And we want to be, as Heather mentioned upfront, very honest about that. We have very grave concerns about the ability to save the trees, given those, the very shallow roots that they have, and the sheer amount of construction disruption that's going to occur as part of this project, within terms of the initial demolition, as well as the construction of new utilities, et cetera. So we want to be very clear that we are very concerned about the ability to save trees, but at the same time recognizing that it is a goal and that, as we go through both eventual survey work that has not yet occurred, and even into the construction phase itself, that the goal is to look for opportunities to save individual trees and to protect them in place. But we also felt like we needed to design a project that could be built if those trees couldn't be saved. And we do feel like that is probably that your most conservative base case is to design a new street in the way that we've shown here, and then retroactively to be able to incorporate the existing trees when and if you can.
Okay.
And just to follow up on that, so what's interesting is the grove concept focuses on more trees than what we have today. So there's been some discussion that we're planting less back than removing, and actually there's a lot more trees because you're talking about different types of tree species and taller and mid-story and lower story. But the trees that we have today, they are planted in both the bulbouts, and then they are also planted in between the bulbouts. And so we had at the PAC was bulbouts, you know, those are planned to be, continue to be tree landscape wells, just more trees in them. And then the trees that we can save that are sort of in between the bulbouts will maintain them, and the tree well will just grow bigger by two feet because the curb is moving inward by two feet into the traveling.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to just make sure we don't do deliberations at this point or necessarily reflections. This is just an opportunity to ask questions of staff, and then we will have a chance for public comment, and then deliberations at the end.
Yeah, I'm not trying to, I mean, I'm just trying to get answers because I think that these questions are pertinent. I appreciate that because it does seem like a contradiction when I'm looking at the planning, and then I'm hearing, we're going to try to save those trees. So I appreciate that explanation. The next question I have deals with the lighting. I can't tell in looking at those if those have been chosen to take into consideration light pollution. Do those lights qualify?
Yes, indeed. The crook arm lights would certainly be sort of cast downward, but we've also are recommending an acorn light that does have a cap on top so that the light would not shine up.
Okay. I had a third question, but it has escaped me, so I'm done for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors or members of the Urban Renewal Board have questions for staff at this time? Okay, we will now start the public testimony. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. We will start with the people who signed up in advance to testify. Please remember to include your name and address for the record, and our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, will call up individuals as they signed up.
We'll start with Bill Green.
He's not here. Okay, thank you. The second person?
Gail Crane, maybe Marshall as well.
Wonderful. If you'd like to join us up here, please be sure to speak into the mic clearly so that everyone can hear you on Zoom, and also we capture your thoughts for the record, and start with your name and address, please.
My name is Gail Marshall Craven, and I live at 734 Southeast Tamari Street in McMinnville. And I'm one of the people that was misinformed. I was picturing a logger coming down Third Street with a chainsaw and his cork boots and just whacking down trees. So obviously, I was wrong, but I got to say, I do like the plan. I love the idea of the soil cells so that the trees can actually expand because you can't keep a tree contained usually. And I understand keeping as many trees as we can on Third Street, but I do understand that some of them would need to be sacrificed in order to make a beautiful Third Street. One thing I would ask is bathrooms, please, please, public bathrooms. As a woman, I used to come from the coast to McMinnville to do all my shopping. The first place we stopped was J.C. Penney's to go pee. J.C. Penney doesn't exist anymore, and there is no place to go pee. And as a woman, I need to pee. So sorry for the pee, but please add public bathrooms and yay on the plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Claudia?
Next, we have Walt Gow.
Walt Gow, P.O., Box 480, McMinnville. I, stepping out of my normal role here as chair and just speaking as a citizen of McMinnville, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to make these comments. We, as Heather said, we all love these existing trees in downtown. Majority of the Third Street trees were planted in 1975, five years before I came. And so I've watched them grow for 42 years, and I feel pretty strongly about them. But I also feel pretty strongly about downtown and its future, and that's why I participated and volunteered in this process. We should plan for a healthy and a stable urban forest as a 50-year process undertaken, not for our own benefit, but for the benefit of our children. And I just have a three-month grandchild, so I think in terms of my grandchild. 10 years from now, 20 years from now, we could salvage the existing trees, and we could fix the sidewalks, and we could paper over the problem. But come time to replace the infrastructure and make the basic improvements and replacements that need to happen, you're going to be tearing out everything that we do and still losing all of those trees. So the 10- or 20-year solution is the less painful one. It's the easier solution to me, but it's not, to me, the right solution and the long-term solution for our grandchildren. So I'm mindful of that. We really should work, as I've said, to emulate a true forest that has several species of trees, not just mostly one and some of another. We looked at timber companies to plant the same kind of tree in a monoculture. We shouldn't have that kind of thinking in our downtown. You know, I'm not criticizing that for timber companies, but for downtown's not so good. It's been said that we plan to have an equal or actually much greater number of trees on Third Street. What hasn't been said is that the existing trees in between Second and Fourth Street, on each of the side streets, are not being talked about being removed. So the plurality of the trees in downtown McMinnville will continue to be as they are despite their, despite their sometimes troublesome capabilities. As Task Force 2000 recommended in 1996, which was the basis for the 2000 master plan, the trees in downtown McMinnville should be subject to a rotation policy so that you replace 3% of the trees every year, and over a period of 30-some years, you end up with a population of trees, none of which are going to die all at the time, all at the same time because they age out. Well, we made that mistake in 1975. Well, I wouldn't say it's a mistake. We made, we recommended changing that in 2000, and it was a painful recommendation which never got implemented. We, I hope that we will implement the rotation, a rotation program in the future because if we plant 90% of the trees over, we're going to end up with the same problem of trees all of the same age, and we ultimately need to have a plan. So I'm running out of time. So I thank you for the opportunity to make these comments.
Thank you, Mr. Gow. Claudia?
Next, we have Dave Bruckels.
Dave Bruckels, 2695 Northwest Mount Ashland Drive, McMinnville. I just want to, first of all, say that Heather's presentation, I didn't expect it to be that large and informative, and it was amazing because she capsulated everything and she dealt with a lot of issues. Perhaps some of you read my article last week in the viewpoint that, you know, met some of these concerns people had and misinformation that was being disseminated, and met them on with facts, okay? Because that's what we're talking about here, is facts, not just emotion. I want you all to be aware that the MDA board completely supports this plan, and that the downtown business owners and so forth that are working with us support this plan, that we have a lot of work to do. This is just a very initial phase. The next phases are going to be longer, they're going to be drawn out. They too will be contentious, I'm sure. And then we're going to have to find the money to be able to implement the plan, and once we get to that point, then we're going to have to hold the hands of a lot of people downtown to get them through it. So this is a long process. This isn't something that's going to happen tomorrow, and I just want you all to know that we're behind it, and we're going to do everything to make it successful. Thank you.
Next, we have Heather Miller.
My apologies, I was, hi, sorry, I was previously sick, and I haven't quite flushed the coughing out, but I have six days in a row testing negative, so I apologize for the coughing fits. They might happen occasionally, and I will keep my mask on throughout the meeting regardless, but I apologize for the interruption. And I apologize, Ms. Miller, I didn't know you'd already been called in because I was coughing in the kitchen. Please go ahead. I apologize.
No problem. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you, Mayor Drabkin and Council for hearing us tonight. I am at 575 Northeast Third Street, and I'm here speaking as a downtown business owner as well as the board chair for the McMinnville Downtown Association and a member of the PAC that's been working on what is before you for the past six to seven months. I want to first stress that the process that we went through was extremely professional and collaborative. A huge shout out to both Heather Richards and Sarah Architects and all of the city staff that worked to bring information that our committee requested. Oftentimes, we asked for new options that were not presented as ideas. They were combinations of things that we saw, and they were very flexible in going back to the drawing board and working with us to meet the unique needs that we saw for downtown. There's been a lot of conversation about trees. I think the biggest point for me, and as we see economic vitality and sustainability of our downtown core, is the question of, are we choosing the trees at the expense of capturing infrastructure dollars that may not be available again in the near future to improve and update the infrastructure that's desperately needed to sustain business and operations for our downtown core? I think that's the big question before us. We work to support our business owners and property owners. We also work very hard to ensure that the downtown community in the Third Street is the heart of McMinnville, and without businesses and without viability downtown, we lose that. So I think that the opportunity before us to capture these federal dollars, we've already, you as a council, have chosen that this is a priority for McMinnville in investing dollars to get us to this point, and I would just, it would be very discouraging to see this project get held up because of a short-term challenge of having trees that are not as mature as we would like. We're also committed, as an organization, to support our businesses through the process and to continue to advocate that we want to retain the charm that makes downtown McMinnville so appealing to both residents and visitors alike. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Next?
Next, we have Sylla McLellan.
Thank you. Sylla?
Hi. Oh, there we go. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Good evening, and thank you, everybody, council and committee members. My name is Sylla McClellan, 320 Northeast Third Street. I'm here as a merchant, a Third Street property owner, a PAC committee member and citizen. Years ago, I learned that Third Street was going to be torn up to accommodate updates and infrastructure. I had seen this happen in other communities and was concerned about how it might impact the folks doing business downtown. I started pestering folks at the city, saying, when a committee was formed to address this, I wanted to be on it. And so I was, and it's been great. Everyone in the committee deeply loves Third Street. We may not always agree on a decision, but we've had healthy discussions about the choices made. I've learned a lot about infrastructure planning, realistic expectations, and how passionate my fellow McMinnvillians are about downtown and Third Street. It is simply not possible to please everyone. However, I'm confident that the choices made were done so in a thoughtful and constructive manner. Am I thrilled about having Third Street torn up for a while? No. But I'm looking forward to not having the curb in front of the bookstore full of standing water all winter long due to poor drainage. And the trees, I love the trees. I love the landscape they offer. I love the twinkle lights, the shade they provide, the sound the leaves make in the wind, but I don't love the uneven and occasionally dangerous sidewalk. I don't love the dying trees and their branches coming down after a storm. It would be amazing if we could save some of the trees, but I know that most will be replaced, and understand that in the end, we will be glad that they were. There have been several letters in the local paper that have given the impression that the powers that be are making decisions without true consideration of what the community wants, that some ill-founded desire for change is leading to choices that are not based on professional advice and experience. This is simply untrue. The trees alone have taken up a significant portion of time at these meetings, including information from urban planners, arborists, urban foresters, and more. I feel confident that every reasonable effort has been and will continue to be made to ensure these plans are meeting the needs of the community both now and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next?
Those are all the ones who were pre-registered, but next we have Stephen Rupp.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Rupp. Thank you, Mayor Drabkin and Council, for letting me speak. Third Street is 75 feet from building to building, and anybody that thinks it's going to be a Mies van der Rohe solution to this problem, it's going to go wonderful over the world, just not thinking. My understanding is that the water mains under Third Street are over 100 years old and made of cast iron and are subject to breakage. My other understanding is that the storm drainage and sewer in many places are the same pipe, and that all has to be replaced. And when you do that, it's a major undertaking. So we, I was on the PAC, and my feeling is, is we have two choices. We can stay with what we got, which is absolutely disastrous, or we can find something that is adequate. It's not a world-class thing because if it's a world-class thing between 75 feet, you're not going to end up with huge sidewalks, and you're not going to end up with a Champs There's many details in this plan that I disagree with, but there's a long, 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 long way to go to finish the whole design. We're just doing a concept paintbrush over the top. This is not the final. It's maybe 90% of the final, maybe 95% of the final. There's several details in there that I strongly disagree with, but, you know, we've all got to work together, and we've all got to find a way to make it work. This is a good plan, given the conditions under which it was conceived. This is a good plan, given the conditions under which it was conceived. Anybody that thinks that Third Street's going to look like Third Street looks now when this is finished is just dreaming. It'll never look like Third Street does right now, not in my lifetime. Maybe in some of your grandchildren's time, it might look that way, but right now, it's going to be gentrified, kind of a little bit bleak compared to what we got now, but it's not going to look anything like the 1960s, where it was just, just total wasteland. And that's what prompted the MDA in the first place, was we had a total wasteland down there. And I think everybody's conscious of where they want to go. I think people are well-intentioned, and I think ongoing discussions will, will make this thing work out. And if you're not, you're not going to finish this thing tonight, you're not going to solve all the problems tonight, but just getting it moving, understanding that we can all work together, and understanding that this thing is going to be for the best of the town over the long run, even though it's not in my lifetime or probably not even your lifetimes, it's, it's what we got to do. That's what I say.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that's signed up?
Yes. Next, we have Scott Cunningham.
Thank you. Mr. Cunningham, are you on Zoom?
Yes, I am. Thank you so much. First, I just want to say that I have gone along with many of the steps here. I was asked to be one of the people several years ago that spoke about how this would impact businesses and the fact that the city was taking really hard consideration of what this would do to us as we went through this process. And, and I just want to say thank you for the fact that you included many of us there. I think I was in the meeting with Sylah McClellan in one of those early meetings. So secondly, I, I also want to say that I really do appreciate the fact that we are forward-thinking enough to really look at all of our infrastructure and replacing that before we run into an emergency. Because as I think we all know, as much as budgets are constrained right now, you never want to deal with a serious catastrophe where we have major water lane, or water lines breaking and/or sewer systems breaking. So I want to thank the city for being forward-thinking. And with that being said, many of the things that were said tonight, I completely agree with and completely support my fellow business owners and the folks that are on the PAC as it is right now. So I do want to just again, give my thanks for that. The considerations that I might ask for is, one, looking at some of those bulbous, obviously being bigger than they are today. If we were to have dine outside continue as a program, which I hope it is, and I think many of the community really like, there will be, I would like to consider where those bulbous might land, because in the case of like, community plate, right now, the way it looks like is that we would lose much of our dining area that we currently use. And if the fire department still requires a 12-foot wide lane down the middle, that would basically get rid of much of that. So I'd just like to consider where those land within the blocks, and maybe that's each block, to see how that might affect the individual businesses. Second, we have been a tree city for many, many, many years. The one thing we don't have here is an arborist that is on the city payroll, and at least that I know of. And those trees have not been addressed for decades. And so some of the problems that we've had is just the fact that the trees have not been cared for, pruned on regular basis. And so I would really ask that as we think about moving forward, that we potentially consider what it would take for our city to have a full-time arborist as well as a, the vehicles and obviously the support to take care of these trees. Because if we're going to put this much love and effort and support into them, I really do think that the trees need to be properly taken care of. With that being said, I might throw back out something that I threw out to the MDA while I was president, that we should definitely start a campaign where people basically donate to take care of the trees and delight the trees. We clearly have many, many hundreds, if not thousands, of people that absolutely love these trees and would like to keep them the way they are. And I might suggest that when we move forward, obviously, there will be new trees, that we take care of them as much as we like to talk about how much we love them. So that is what I have, and I really appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. And next, we have?
Margaret Cross.
Thank you, Margaret Cross. On Zoom?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Great. Margaret Cross, 1102 Southwest West Lane in McMinnville. And I really appreciated the opportunity to hear more about this tonight. I, it's answered some of my questions, and I really appreciate the, what Mr. Rupp said, this is so important, that we understand this is a long-term investment. And with that in mind, I did have a couple of concerns that I've just been thinking about and mulling over, that go to design, because that was what was being offered tonight. Do you want video? I see a little sign saying, start my video.
It's, it's working just fine the way it is, thank you.
We don't need that, okay. Okay, well, I think one of my biggest concerns is that we continue to keep a livable, functional downtown for the residents. I am very concerned that we, we talk so much about attracting tourists, and I know tourists are important, but this is our downtown. And if we gentrify it too much, in other cities that have gone that direction to, to focus on attracting mostly tourists, those, that functionality starts to fail. So I'm looking at more practical things, like trying to determine whether or not our, the, the, the street width is going to be appropriate at 10 feet per lane. Does this work for the fire department if you narrow those lanes to 10 feet? I'm concerned that with the bulbs and the planters, that in some areas, we'll be losing what is a wide sidewalk, that, that's often 10 to 12 feet, that'll narrow to four feet in some areas. And then when you add outdoor dining, that can complicate it even further. So that's a design issue that goes really to, is it going to continue working for residents? Or is it going to be geared to tourists? I'm very concerned about losing parking spaces. I am, I know, I'd love to see us be a walkable, bike, all-bikeable, that'd be wonderful, but the fact is, that's not what Americans do. And we're taking spaces out with this design, which suggests that then we will have to build a parking structure, which I see as being considered down to the east end. And that bothers me, because that's going to be pushing parking out into the neighborhoods, and the narrow streets may be pushing traffic onto Fifth and onto Second, which are already, Second's already becoming a problem. So I worry about that. I, I'm a little, a big concern I have is that we're losing downtown housing stock to very expensive hotels and vacation rentals. And one thing I think the committee should be looking at and the city should look at is keeping like a vertical use zoning there, so we can put housing over some of the existing storefronts and keep the downtown viable and livable at night. Because otherwise, you start getting crime and it's not, again, a functional downtown. So those are some of my big concerns. I'd also like to see us make sure we keep curbing, because curbs channel the stormwater, they provide tactile and visual warnings for pedestrians who are about to enter a traffic area, and they decrease the number of pedestrian injuries. So trees aside, that's a long-term issue, and I know it's going to continue to be debated. I hope we keep function, keep focusing on function. Function has to precede form.
Thank you, Ms. Cross, and you're at time. Thank you very much. Mark Davis? Would you like, did you fill out a public testimony slip? Not for this one?
For the next year.
For the next one. Okay, wonderful. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to testify on this public Is there anyone on the Zoom that would like to testify in this public hearing? You can raise your hand or send Claudia a message or put a message in the chat if you would like to testify. Do we have anyone on the phone? Okay, does any urban renewal board or MIRAC member need anything clarified regarding any testimony at this point?
I remember my other question to staff.
Okay, we're going to conclude it, is it, can we do it during deliberations or you'd like to? You got me on order. It's true. Go ahead. What's your question, Councilor Chenoweth?
My question is, and it goes, it was mentioned in different ways, but one of the concerns I have with any of the projects that we begin to look at is, is maintenance. And how are we going to continue to maintain this? And, you know, up to this point, we have not maintained what we have. I'm concerned when I look at this layout, how much maintenance it's going to require to keep it looking nice. Because it looks to me like we're creating quite the workload to maintain the, the planters and, and the, and the different levels of the canopy. So I wonder if someone could speak to, how much, was this discussed? How much maintenance is, is expected in comparative to what we are currently having? And what is the solution if there's more? Thank you.
So, Councilor Chenoweth, it's Heather Richards. And Anne Pagano is on Zoom as well, so she may want to weigh in. We have had discussions and concerns about maintenance. Our Public Works team is part of our technical advisory committee, and, and they definitely bring that lens to the table as we look at these designs, and have been providing their input to the consultants as well as the project advisory committee. The reality is, we don't know enough details of what the final design is in, in terms of what the actual maintenance cost would be, and how much of a differential that would be for current maintenance. But as you pointed out, we have limited means of current maintenance that are occurring right now due to resources, that, not, certainly not due to the heart of our Public Works team. And so that's something that we'll have to, as a community, have a discussion about.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, that will now end our public hearing. The public hearing's now closed. We are now going to go into deliberation in order to provide city staff next steps on the project. So I'm going to tee up our, our discussion here with a few thoughts. And I am going to not focus entirely on the trees, but spend just a moment on them. First of all, I, I again want to thank the project advisory committee and MIRAC for all of the work that's, that's brought this forward. And I also want to thank all the members of the public who have responded to the surveys and really gotten involved in that engagement process and have been giving feedback to the council and to city staff, both in those committee settings, but also over email and, and those other modes of communication. We really appreciate it. We are reliant on your feedback to give you the deliverables that you want. So, there's some things that I've heard that aren't specific to the design, but are more, I think, about the philosophy of, of what I've been hearing from the community in terms of approach. One of this is actually a great follow-up on Councilor Chenoweth's point, which is that I've been hearing that there's a desire for an investment in things that specifically can be maintained. So the community really does not want this project to move forward if we don't have, or it does not want it to move forward maybe in as robust of a way if we do not have long-term maintenance plans. And, and then that ties in with a similar sentiment of wanting to see fixed what is broken, but not to recreate our downtown. I've, I've, I've heard that a lot too. And I think that that comes up in some interesting ways in design elements. When you brought up that there wasn't a strong preference over curbs, six-inch or 12-inch. I think what I'm generally hearing in the community about preserving our downtown and fixing what's broken is, is that, that we want, that there's a desire for more of the same that's coming out, and also through the surveys. And we see that with some of the design details that are being picked out by community members, The desire to keep the tunnel effect with the trees. So there's a lot of different ways in which the community is saying, yes, please fix this and please improve this for us, and also, please preserve our downtown. I think that's important to keep in mind. And then in regards to the trees, I think part of what I hear that the community wants is to really understand of what an acceptable percentage of loss is from this committee, committee and, and from the city council. They, the, the community wants to hear that, you know, we will have our best practices when it comes to tree protection. And so I understand that there's some conflict when we say, well, we don't know how many trees and we don't know what our criteria is going to be for removal, right? If we looked at the state of the sidewalks, for instance, and if we pulled every tree where there was an associated three or four, I think that would be 75% of the trees probably gone all at the same, right, at the same time. So that, I think that's what the community really wants to hear, is what's that criteria of how we're going to start doing this selective, selective removal, so that there's confidence that it won't be decimated? Or that if the results that come in say, you have to pull every tree, where is there going to be an acceptable standard of saying, okay, well, how are we going to address that then? How does that change what we do going forward? And, and in the idea of looking at some of these best practices in tree protections, you know, I had a lot of conversations this week where we've talked about the fact that there are cities all over the world that fix their sidewalks and do fix infrastructure and in major cities and, and do a lot of tree protection. And that comes in in all sorts of ways, from how you're watering while you're changing things over, and how you're excavating around those roots, and if it's happening by hand or if it's happening by machine, if it's, if you're pulling versus scraping things or lifting carefully. So there's really a lot into that. And so I think that's some that I'm looking for is how, you know, what's a, what's acceptable to these bodies in terms of what, what kind of goals can we give to staff at this time of, of saying, as you, as you're moving forward, like, these are what the community wants, these are some of the standards that we need. And then I'll just conclude that by saying, you know, that I, I, there's so many parts of this plan that are so incredible, and so I, I hate to spend just an inordinate amount of time on, on one part of this conversation, because the things like the, some of the words that were said today, like that this is an ever-evolving streetscape. I, I love that, I love hearing that. And, and seeing all of the positives that are coming out of this, where we're getting varying heights and biodiversity and age diversity just in our urban forests, that's, those are all such important things for the long life of not only our urban forests, but our downtown. And with that, who else would like to speak on this and deliberate?
Well, I have a question.
Please, Councilor Chenoweth.
We have three minutes. And I'm just wondering, do we have to transition right at 7:00 or can we push this a little bit?
We have the city council at 7:00. Let's just try to have our deliberations and see if the council, if everyone's ready to move forward before we reorganize here.
I'm good.
Councilor Payne?
I'm concerned about semi-traffic down Third Street. I don't know how many times I've seen the semi get stuck already down Third Street. So narrowing lanes is something of a concern, but that's, I don't know how much discussion we can have about that.
Does a member of staff want to address that concern?
Yeah, so there's two parts to that. So Third Street currently in our transportation system plan is a collector, which means its focus is on taking cars and freight through Third, through the downtown. When we update our TSP, we're going to change that because we don't believe Third Street should be the collector. It should probably be Fifth or Second, if they're better built for that. And we had discussion about the freight that delivers to the businesses themselves and where they need to go and park. And a lot of them are parking on side streets to do their deliveries, but we will continue to have that dialogue as we get into the engineering phases.
Thank you. And will you go ahead and put your slides up on the board, or up on the screen while we're discussing about potential motions?
Well, and, and I'm sorry, Mayor, I neglected to put that slide together. So really, we're just looking for direction on whether we move forward with the RFP for engineering as a next step.
Thank you.
I mean, when I said I'm good, I'd like to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't intend. Councilor Mankey.
Okay. I am a member of the PAC committee, and I have thoroughly enjoyed listening to the deliberations. There's been a lot of cross thought, there's been disagreements, all sorts of things, but the communication has really been excellent. There's been a lot of people working very hard to solve problems. And there's a lot of ingenuity, I would say, overall. There are a few people that weren't too happy, but generally speaking, I think Third Street merchants are on board with this and are pretty happy about it. My impression is that, yeah, chances are good we're going to lose a lot of trees. I really like what Walt said about replacing 3% a year or something like that, at least after the first 10 years or something, depending on how well they're, they're able to, everybody, all of them grow. But I think it's really important to realize that if we don't do this in another five to 10 years, it's going to be a mess, even worse. And I, I just want people to realize that what we're going to get in the long run is going to be a little bit different, and it's not going to be what we currently have, which is beautiful, and we've all been so fortunate to have had it for, gosh, I guess, almost 40, 50 years now. I've totally appreciated it. But realistically, we need to do the infrastructure. And when you do the infrastructure, things are going to be damaged. Roots are sitting on top of most of that, or in it. So you just, you just need to be realistic about it. That's what I have to say. I, I support the committee's general decision on this, and I think it's a good plan. And I really would like to see it go forward into the engineering phase.
Thank you. Councilor Gary?
Yeah, to, to skip to the punchline, I, I'm in favor of the RFP for engineering, and a couple of quick comments. I, I would cast myself in the lot of overly involved and, and invested in, in the Downtown Association, I think, and the downtown in general. And I think this, this plan is a great charge to the future, right? It's getting the chance to do what Steve and his forebears did so many years ago when they saw blight. And in this chance, we get to see it coming and get ahead of it. And, and so I think that, that makes sense. We're making a, a better downtown for the future, and I wholeheartedly agree. And I think the team we've assembled to do that is, is, has that in mind. And anecdotally, in, in, in my experience in the construction profession, I've also been the guy out there in the field with the subcontractor, holding the set of plans, and the guy's going to dig up the trees, and, and they're just going to say it's probably easier to yard all these out of here. And I, I mean, I've been a part of those conversations. And so you talk about rate of loss, what's acceptable, interested in those conversations. I frankly don't think we can get far down the road without the willingness to almost start over in terms of Third Street trees. And any salvage, anything that's salvageable will be, will be a win. And, and I, I think, I think I'm there. I mean, we look at, we're talking about, you know, the best time to plant the tree is 20 years ago, so the best time to be downtown will be 20 years after we start this project. And in that term, if we, if we plant and manage it successfully, it'll be great. So I'm, I'm ultimately in favor of, of moving forward with the RFP for engineering. A question on specifics of deliverables for this phase from, from the consultant. Was any sort of proposed schedule of values to whatever design we come to at this point, knowing that we're only on sea of many letters? Was there any sort of proposed budget for what we're talking about, for construction?
No, to be honest, again, we're, we're urban designers and landscape architects. We have looked a little bit at, you know, at what some of the, the elements that we showed, like, you know, what does a street light cost, that kind of thing. But there's, we have not done any work on estimating the infrastructure, you know, the roadway pouring the curbs, the stormwater system. That'll all be done in that next, in that next phase.
So the engineering scope will be the first time we're able to see any rough cost estimates plugged into what we're designing, putting?
The engineering phase will be through 30%, which is, you know, where most, most projects usually do their, their initial cost estimates. And we'll get to that, that initial number that you can really start to, start to push around and start to make some decisions off of.
Copy. And then to put a point and direction on some things we've heard here is, I encourage staff to make sure that those analyses include ongoing maintenance and capital improvement costs as a plan for the, for the ongoing livability and maintenance of that.
If I could, just for a moment, I would also encourage you all in that process on the, on the maintenance, because again, we, we've heard it's the, one of the biggest concerns throughout this process as well, is to, there are a bunch of creative solutions to maintenance to involve third parties, even private businesses, in some interesting ways. And we'd be happy to talk to you about that, about what other communities have, have done. So we think there are some really interesting and creative solutions out there.
And what, yeah. And that makes sense. And when I say capital improvement, I see, I saw benches down there, tree replacement, metal boxes, all accoutrements, lights, banners, and everything should be included in, in sort of whatever percent per year for capital improvements.
So, Councilor Gary, if I understand that correctly, you're looking for the initial capital investment costs, but also sort of the annual, annual upkeep costs, including any sort of replacement costs?
Yeah, whether it's in terms of maintenance contracts from a third-party landscaper or FTEs for the city of McMinnville, one or the other, which would be a, a good placeholder at this point in time anyway, plus assumed percentage of capital improvement and replacement costs at a yearly basis that would cover both arboreal pieces, as well as infrastructure of benches, lights, metal planter boxes, et cetera.
Thank you. Would any member of the Urban Renewal Board like to make a motion on the direction of the next step for city staff?
I would like to make a motion to move the overall project into the engineering phase.
Second.
I believe it's D or E.
I have a motion by Councilor Mankey and a second by Councilor Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Vote passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. I apologize for running late. I will now adjourn the special meeting of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Board and the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. Even though we are running a few minutes late, we are going to take a two-minute break, and we will reconvene, well, we'll take a four-minute break, and we'll reconvene at 7:10. Apologize for starting late for everybody on the call and in the audience.
I'm a mess. Most days of my life, it's amazing. Good evening and welcome to the city council session of July 12, 2022. It's 7:10 PM, and I will call the meeting to order. And I will request that our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, do a roll call.
Councilor Gary.
Good evening.
Councilor Mankey.
Present.
Councilor Chenoweth.
Present.
Councilor Payne.
Here.
Council President Garvin.
Council President Garvin will join us. Currently, he is cleaning Air Force One for the president, so. As an excused absence.
Um, Councilor Peralta is absent this evening, and interim Mayor Drapkin.
Here.
Wonderful. Councilor Mankey, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I'll rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a time when we'll take comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments. And any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some date in the future. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak, and you're on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature in, to request to speak. And once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. You can also send a chat directly to our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, and she will announce you. Are there any members of the community that would like to testify today, speak?
Yes, we had Sandy Festin.
Thank you. Sammy, please join us. Remember to speak into the mic and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Sandy Festin. I live at 2150 Northeast Grand Haven Street. And I just wanted to make a couple quick comments about the city service fee that was passed the last council session. Not so much the fee itself, but the manner in which it was brought to vote. I know there was some methodology thought there. I heard that term quite a bit, and trying to focus on the method of what, getting what's needed rather than putting a dollar amount on it. But from where I'm sitting, as a citizen, that almost seemed worse. You can take that information and kind of keep it in your back pocket for next time. I sat through months of debate between counselors, public hearings, had a lot of food for thought with amounts going through my mind of what was needed, what we were going to do. And to, at the 11th hour, to have, okay, so now it's going to be this amount, and voted on and passed was kind of shocking to me. In the future, for future, what I would really like to see is if there's going to be any type of service fee, franchise fee, whatever is needed for the budget, that's going to affect all of the citizens of the city. I would prefer that it be put to a vote so that we can decide what to do.
Anyway. Thank you very much. Any other member of the public like to comment this evening?
Yes, we have Crystal. I will need Crystal's full name, and if she can just respond to my chat, thank you.
Great. Crystal, if you're on Zoom, you can unmute, you can take off your video if you like, and we will need your first and last name and address for the record, please. Go ahead.
Hi, sorry, I'm not really sure how this works, and I'm outside avoiding my children because they're loud. I am trying to address.
Could you state your first and last name for the record, please?
Oh, yes, sorry, my name is Crystal Kane.
Thank you. And your address, please.
I live at 2571 Northeast Chalmers Way in McMinnville.
Wonderful. And please go ahead with your thoughts.
Um, I'm not sure we've really addressed, I've never attended a council meeting. I apologize for any sort of misunderstanding. But I'm not sure that we've addressed my specific concern. I currently reside in a home that is considering being turned into a short-term rental for, like, an Airbnb purpose. And I wanted to sort of address the.
So I'm actually, Crystal, if I can actually ask you to hold your thoughts and maybe come back to us when we're having our public hearing on short, if you're, if you're here to comment on our public hearing regarding short-term rental permits, then I will invite you back at that time to give comment. If it's on something else other than the, the public hearing that's later this evening on a moratorium for the issuance of short-term rental permits, then go ahead at this time. If your comments are on the short-term rental permits, then I'm going to invite you back to speak to us a little bit later. Is that what your comments are on?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Please stay on the line, and we will add you to the list and bring you back at that time.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to speak to the council? Is there any other person on Zoom that would like to speak to the council?
No.
No. Okay, thank you. This, this might seem silly as we, we'll bring Crystal back in just a moment, but we do want to have it at the right place in the right time, so thank you for understanding. So we are now going to hold a public hearing regarding ordinance number 5118, an ordinance establishing a moratorium on the issuance of short-term rental permits from September 1, 2022 to December 29, 2022. I'd like to call on Planning Director Heather Richards to give a presentation of the proposal, and the public hearing is open.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. So this is consideration of ordinance number 5118. It's an ordinance that would establish a moratorium on the issuance of short-term rental permits for 120 days, from September 1 through December 29 of 2022. Moratoriums are governed by state law. ORS 197.520 governs how local governments can declare moratorium on land uses. One of the things we needed to do was provide written notice to Department of Land Conservation and Development at least 45 days prior to the hearing. We did do that on May 27, 2022. And then US City Council needs to adopt findings specific to that state regulation as to why you're considering a moratorium and passing one on the issuance of land use permits. The findings have been provided to you in draft form, and they are Exhibit A of the ordinance itself. to you in draft form and they are Exhibit A of the ordinance itself. The findings are really related to the fact that not that there is an enormity of short-term rental permits in McNimble because our numbers don't actually show that. We have 58 short-term rental permits currently on the books for what we call whole-home rentals. So that's when somebody rents out their whole home on Airbnb or, or vacation rental by owner. And then we also have what we call resident occupied short-term rentals, which is when someone rents out a room or two. And for the resident occupied short-term rentals, we have 28 of those, uh, permitted. We allow short-term rentals as an outright use in our commercial zones as lodging, so we do not permit those. Um, they're just allowed outright and so we don't have numbers for those. In terms of the overall, um, impact on our housing stock, we, we have about 13,000 dwelling units in McNimble. So the numbers that are in the residential zones are not enormous in terms of impact on the housing stock itself. And, um, but keeping in mind that we do have housing stock in our commercial zones and we do know that we've had a lot of resident, a lot of, uh, dwelling units in the downtown area convert into, uh, lodging in recent years. What we are saying, though, is two things. One, we are seeing a lot of pressure on short-term rentals in the neighborhoods that are close to the downtown. We currently have a 200-foot spacing standard for short-term rentals, meaning they cannot be within more than 200 feet of each other, um, or less than 200 feet of each other, and we do that by property line. Um, and, uh, and we are seeing that in the neighborhoods that are close to the downtown, pretty much every available home that comes on the market, we get phone calls for as to whether it meets that spacing standard or not. And if it does meet the spacing standard, we are seeing that those are being bought and converted into short-term rentals. So those neighborhoods have approached us and said there, there's, the density of the short-term rentals occurring in their neighborhoods are impacting their quality of life in terms of having, um, consistent residential, um, occupation of those homes. The other thing that we are seeing in the planning department is that the short-term rental permits have increased in the last year, um, fairly considerably compared to previous years. So we typically permit about three to four new short-term rentals a year, um, or, uh, I would say three to five new short-term rentals a year. And we can, we will see one or two come off the books. Um, but in this past year, just in 2022, we have permitted 10 of those 58 short-term rental permits that I shared with you. And we are fielding phone calls all the time. So people are looking for short-term rental opportunities in McNimble, especially close to the downtown. We're seeing a lot of investors from outside of the community who are purchasing these homes now and putting them into short-term rentals and investment companies as well. Previously, I would say, I've been here six years, in the previous years that I've been here, we've mostly seen local homeowners apply for short-term rental permits to put their homes into the lodging market when they're, um, rain-burding, I would say, into drier climates in the south during the winter months, or if they, or if they're intending to go on extended vacations. We have seen that happen as well. Um, so we believe that the pressure is increasing. We're concerned about the investment opportunities associated with it, that it is creating that pressure, and we're concerned about the impact on the neighborhoods, especially closest to the downtown in that regard. And so we have been asked to evaluate the short-term rental code, um, in terms of how it allows short-term rentals in our residential zones. Because of our workload, we're not able to really bring that into our work plan unless we do put a moratorium on issuing the permits because they do take time for our staff to, one, deal with all the phone calls we receive. And then, two, the short-term rentals are becoming more and more controversial and instead of being a permit, are typically going into a public hearing process at this point in time with, um, some significant opposition to them locally. So our recommendation is to do the moratorium so we can take the time to do the work in terms of evaluating the short-term rental code. I will say, though, short-term rentals have been an active dialogue in McNimble for many years. We just seems like we look at this code every four years or so. Um, we started, uh, allowing vacation home rentals in 2008 as a city. We allowed it as a conditional use permit. What that means is it stays with the property and it's in perpetuity with the property. So it can, that a homeowner can sell it and it can be used as a short-term rental moving forward. At that point in time, when we issued the conditional use permits, we had a 660-foot buffer between short-term rentals. That was removed in 2012 from the code where we didn't have any spacing buffer at all. Um, and then in 2014, we removed the conditional use permit process and just made it what we call a type-one permit, which is an outright permit if you meet a variety of conditions of the code. In 2017, we had a neighborhood approach, the Planning Commission, about reconsidering, um, the outright use permit without a spacing standard for the same reasons I described today, which was they felt the density of short-term rentals in their neighborhood was becoming overwhelming. Um, and at that time, the Planning Commission went through, uh, an evaluation process for about six months, looking at what other communities were doing and, um, had discussion about what made the most sense for McNimble and made the recommendation for what we have today, which is encouraging short-term rentals and lodging in our commercial zones, um, encouraging them as resident occupied short-term rentals where someone lives in the home and is renting out a room or two, um, and trying to, um, create, create less of the short-term rentals where the whole home is rented out, especially in terms of density in neighborhoods by putting that 200-foot spacing buffer in there. That 200 feet was, um, decided upon because that essentially means that there's only one short-term rental per city block in McNimble based on our average block size. Um, you will see that there are, there are some people providing comments, um, who, um, are talking about the multitude of short-term rentals that are close to the downtown. Many of those are in the commercial zones where they're allowed outright, so that it's confusing because they see a home that's, that's a short-term rental, but it's in a commercial zone, so it's allowed as lodging outright. We also get a lot of phone calls about the number of short-term rentals in McNimble because people go on Airbnb and, uh, put in McNimble and many different properties come up. Um, McNimble is based on a zip code in, in Airbnb and the zip code 97128 is about five or six times larger than the city limits and our jurisdiction is just in the city limits. So there are many more, um, short-term rentals allowed online in Airbnb than what we have in the city limits. In terms of code enforcement, we do do code enforcement on short-term rentals. We periodically will go in online and fish around in there, um, to see what's being advertised and what's permitted. Um, we also, um, coordinate with our finance team in terms of who has signed up for the transient lodging tax and is submitting receipts in that regard as well, um, to make sure that everyone who is permitted is also, it's also participating in that process. We don't find a lot of short-term rentals that actually are in residential zones that are operating without permits. We do have two right now in code enforcement that we're working through. But that, typically, we don't, we don't have that many at all in that regard. I will say, uh, Mayor Drapkin asked me to look at what the receipts were in terms of, uh, transient lodging tax for short-term rentals relative to our overall collections. And I apologize, Mayor Drapkin, I was gonna put this up in the slide, but based on what was occurring with my daughter today, I wasn't able to get that done. Um, but the receipts are fairly low in terms of the short-term rentals, uh, relative to our entire transient lodging tax collections, um, based on our residential short-term rentals. So tonight's moratorium, as recommended by the Planning Commission and planning staff, is respective of the permits we issue, which is just in the residential zones. And it's not addressing short-term rentals in the commercial zones.
Thank you.
So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Other than that, um, your role is to conduct the public hearing and then to consider the moratorium and the findings associated with the ordinance.
Thank you. I see you down there. I'm just gonna see if anybody else wants to start this time and then I will come to you. Do you have any questions from this end of the dais to start? No. Counselor Chenoweth.
Yeah, Heather, uh, first off, is your daughter okay?
Yes, my daughter's fine and thank you for that.
You're welcome. Um, thank you for your work. Um, if I remember correctly, the number in the packet is there's 58 of these short-term rentals in McNimble. Is that the correct number?
Yes, and, and the, as defined by the city, short-term rental is the whole home is rented out, so nobody lives there. And there's 28 resident occupied short-term rentals, which means that someone lives there and rents out rooms.
So I would assume of the 20, well, I'm not gonna assume either way. So my question is, how many of those are commercial zoned properties?
So none, none of those would be in the commercial zone. Those are only in the residential zone because that's the only, um, short-term rentals that we require permits of. The, the, um, lodging that's in commercial zones is all an outright use, so they do not need to get a permit from us.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time, counselor? Counselor Gary.
Yeah, if, if we, if we proceed on with the moratorium, um, and I know there was a, there was a 45-day-ish notice period to establish that. If it, if it's the wish to continue on past the 120 days for another period, what, if any, notice periods are done? I'm just thinking of as we get down on this and we, we, you start the wor, the, as part of the impetus is to pause to allow you to do the work. If we get into this and it looks like we want or need more time, what are the, what are the time considerations needed ahead of time if we would like to extend this past the 120 days?
That's, that's a great question. I mean, I look at the regulations right now. It does talk about the, what you, what is required for an extension, um, including the findings that we need to establish as a city for the extension. Uh, let's see. They need to hold a public hearing and adopt written findings, but does not talk about needing to notice it.
Could, yeah. If there'd be another 40-ish day window for notice if we would like to extend or not, but, uh, so a question for the future and then, and then.
And I beg your pardon, it's a 14-day notice. I just saw that. And the extension can be for six months.
14-day notice for an extension?
Mm-hmm.
And the extension can be for six months. And then would the findings need to be altered or could it be the same findings?
The findings would need to be altered because the, um, the test in the state law is slightly different in terms of how it's written. So I provided that as attachment A to your staff packet. And the section I'm looking at for reference is, um, four. That's where it discusses the extension of the moratorium and five is what discusses the, um, notice for the extension.
Oh, thank you. Th- those are my questions for the moment.
Thank you. Any other counselors have questions for staff at this time? We will now start to hear public testimony. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. Uh, we will start with the people who signed up in advance to testify. Please remember to include your name and address for the record. And Claudia, will you, um, bring Crystal back and we'll start, um, with her and then we'll go from there into your list.
Yeah, and Mayor Drapkin, if I may, I neglected to enter into the record the memorandum you got on July 11th that had the additional testimony of 10 letters that you received from McNimble residents. And then also the petition that you received today from Mark Pitts, um, that had 50 signatures on it to enter that in the record, as well as the letter today from Marie Bixta. Sorry about that.
Um, thank you very much. Um, now we will go to Crystal on Zoom, please, to start our public testimony.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi again. Thank you. Um, I'm sorry. So I wanted to speak on this because it affects my family and me quite drastically, actually. Um, I currently reside in a house in question or potential to become a, um, or an STR or a short-term rental. And mine unfortunately would obviously not be a live-in short-term rental. It would be, um, it would completely displace me, my husband and my three children, two of which have special needs and receive services through developmental disabilities. Um, I, like I said, I've lived here for eight years. Um, this is the second place that I've ever rented, so, um, it's, it's not for lack of trying to look for other residents or other, um, places to live in my area. Uh, I feel like the, the attempt in doing so has been met with kind of the same that, that most other residents in McNimble are coming to find, that, uh, the cost of living has obviously risen and so rent is completely astronomical. Um, and for the Airbnb cutoff, uh, I feel like this, the short-term rental is sort of a wordplay in homeowners to still get the Airbnb. Um, they can still list on an Airbnb and be a short-term rental, uh, regardless of displacing families or the, uh, houseless crisis in our community right now. So I'm curious, I guess, if there's any sort of resource for individuals like myself or, um, others in the community that, that don't necessarily have, uh, you know, they do live paycheck to paycheck and they're barely making it, but I've been barely making it for eight years, so it seems to be working. Um, I've, I, I don't know really quite how to pitch my case other than to say that I feel like we have more than enough Airbnbs or short-term rentals in this area. I've been local, I'm 31 years old. I've been local here my whole life. And, um, to, to watch McNimble transition has been beautiful. I've loved it. Um, I actually do ride share and I transport several people to their Airbnbs. Um, so it's not that I have a problem with it. I just feel like we've kept out and we're in a already, we're already in a houseless crisis and in a, a community where, um, we typically come together and solve, solve issues like this. Uh, I know that my.
Thank you, Crystal. If you can conclude your thoughts, your time is up.
Yes, I was, uh, just ending with, I know my community here in this area has also expressed their thoughts on it being not something that they're for as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Claudia, next comment?
Sure.
Next person is Mark Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Drapkin, members of the council. Mark Davis, I live at 652 Southeast Washington Street. Normally, I just run through that, but that's rather relevant here because I live downtown. I live about a block from the post office. I've lived there for 29 years. Um, you know, over the years, we've, you know, the, the neighborhood changes a little, somebody fixes something up, you know, there's, there, there are changes. But what I've noticed in the last few years is a lot more dramatic in our neighborhood. I see, you know, houses being fixed up and, and turned into vacation rentals or upscaled so that the, the rent is more expensive. I guess my primary concern and what I see going on around me is the affordable housing issue. Um, you know, the, as, as these houses get converted to vacation rentals, admittedly, it's a small percentage, as the planning director indicated, but it's still taking away housing that was at one point affordable housing to people and, you know, putting it out of, out of the reach. I mean, just like our previous speaker noted. Um, I, I think we're headed in the wrong direction. Um, you know, we're, we're struggling to build more affordable housing. At the same time, I mean, I just think it's a, a bad plan to be taking away what, what we have. And quite frankly, our neighborhood tends to be, you know, working class, people that have jobs, that, you know, don't have a lot of extra money. A lot of them are rentals, some of them are homeowners, but both are affected by, you know, the, the impact that this is having. And as people have also noted, we're close to the commercial zone, so we have more of this activity than, you know, if you look at your little map there, you see a few houses, but there are literally vacation rentals right next to some of those houses. you know, if you look at your little map there, you see a few houses, but there are literally vacation rentals right next to some of those houses that are on the map in our neighborhood. So I support the moratorium. I urge the city to think carefully about how we want to move forward with this, get it under some sort of control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Claudia?
Next, we have Jim Kreutzbender.
Thank you. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jim Kreutzbender, 1317 Northeast 9th. My neighborhood is from Northeast 3rd to Northeast 10th, Lafayette Avenue, East Oregon Street. That is the school administration building on Lafayette, back to the BPA substation on Oregon Street, and the creek behind it, and Joe Dancer Park behind that. So this is an area of post-World War II housing. I live in a 1949 house. And there's houses up to 1970s, and there are middle-class and lower-middle-class houses. Well, we don't have an abundant stock of these older affordable houses. There are lots of Hispanic families in my neighborhood, and a few white families getting started, and other working-class families. But there's a lot of us retirees living on Social Security, and some people lived there for decades and decades. And these people are my friends and neighbors. So we already have five vacation rentals, that's not a lot compared to some of the other neighborhoods, but we've gotten three in the last year. And all three, all six of them are within two or three blocks of Lafayette Avenue, so close to downtown. But as I pace off the streets and the 200-foot distances, we could get eight or 10 more vacation rentals in my neighborhood. So so the city map shows vacation rentals, by my count, is 53 houses, but the report says 58. And one of these six vacation rentals in my neighborhood is not on the map. Maybe it's an owner-lived-in vacation rental that's not on that map. But these investment companies are coming in, and they're outbidding the local people, and driving up prices and making houses unaffordable. So the planning department is always talking about lack of affordable housing, when my neighborhood has a lot of those types of housing. But the prices are getting driven up.
You have about 30 seconds left.
Okay. So I have a vacation rental going in across from me, and that house had a family living in it. The house at 10th and Logan had a family living in there. Another house on 10th Street sold for 100 grand more than four years ago. It had a couple living there. So yes, we need a moratorium, but we need, since the moratorium can only go 120 days, we need to extend it a lot longer. So I have a plan for you, so why not use some of the tax money from these houses that are being taken off the market? Use some of that tax money to build affordable housing, like give it to Habitat. Buy housing or put up housing and buy lots, or some other nonprofit organization. So there is affordable housing for people here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Dallas Peterson.
Is Dallas on Zoom? Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Would you like to start your public testimony, please?
Yes, thank you. Esteemed members of the council, commission, and our community in general, good evening. My name is Dallas Peterson, and I live at 724 Northwest Cedar Street. My email is dallaspetersen@gmail. Some of you might recall my and others' vocal opposition to the misapplied use of short-term rentals in our community recently, specifically the one at 713 Northwest Cedar Street, of which, to date, has garnered a half dozen or so recorded complaints. Having noted that, however, I'm pleased to see the council, commission applying the extraordinary measure of requesting a moratorium on the issuance of short-term rental permits. Having taught political philosophy and community development theory at the University of Colorado, and having worked with multiple private and public sector organizations representing a spectrum of discussions surrounding local economic development, in this context, I know it takes courage to say, "I don't know," and even more to get to know. Moving forward, my hope is to see the moratorium approved, and the ensuing process respectfully include the involvement of everyday concerned citizens in the discovery, application, and review of enhanced short-term rental and related ordinances. My hope, too, is that any serious discussion of changes includes accessibility, competitive renewals, and so-called buffers or spacing, among others. I'd like to underscore the point that your time and commitment to our shared community is deeply appreciated and ideally reciprocal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Claudia?
That is everyone we had.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify? Great. Jill, if you'll come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you. My name is Jill Poyer. I live at 523 Northwest Birch Street. We've lived in that residence about 42 years. It is downtown, probably pretty adjacent to some of the commercial. But what I want to talk to you about is, first of all, I'm in favor of the moratorium. Second of all, I would like to see more spacing between short-term rentals. Because when you think of one house per block, there might only be three houses on the block. Dallas, who just spoke, has a short-term rental that went in just across the street. And, you know, that's one out of maybe six or seven houses. But my most important concern is the quality of the community in McMinnville. The people who are going to try to raise families that have jobs that may not, as they're beginning their life in McMinnville, that is, they need the short-term, they need the affordable housing. And these people are going to be the ones who are going to be putting their children in our schools. They're going to be the people who might volunteer at Turkey Rama. They're going to be the people who are invested in our schools, they're invested in our town, they care about it. And these houses are being bought up, often in cash, by investment companies, and then either turned into rentals, because we have a problem with the rental thing, too. We need to have housing that people can buy, so they can start some of the wealth that they will build up through the rest of their lives, and they will be able to continue to contribute to this community. I don't know whether there's a shortage of people outside our community who want to visit here. We seem to be building hotels. But, and I myself go, you know, I travel and do a short-term rental, you know, I think they're great. But they are closing out a lot of our young people and the people who are starting in our community and who will continue in our community after we're all gone, and we ought to be thinking about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There was someone else over here, I couldn't see who it was, but if you'd like to join us, please. Yes, come on up, thank you, state your name and address for the record. Nice to see you.
My name is Mark Pitts. I'm from 785 Northwest 21st Street, and we have some other folks from 21st Street who are here as well. We're the ones who presented a petition with 50 signatures indicating our support for the moratorium. Some of what I'd do would just be to agree with a number of the statements that have been made. The current short-term rental policy is certainly not neighborhood-friendly. The 200-foot spacing is much too close and has the potential to decimate neighborhoods because of the density. I would also say, I'm just mystified, as I did some research about occupancy rates, and I was here in March and stated these, but I would restate them. It feels like the current STR policy is kind of a solution in search of a need. Let me give you some statistics here. There is an industry website called All the Rooms. Two days ago, I checked from July 21 to July 22, the occupancy rate for McMinnville's STRs, and this is before the 10 new STRs were approved that Heather indicated. The occupancy rate was 45%. So tell me again, why are we approving new STRs, reducing the stockpile of available homes when the annual occupancy rate is 45%? That just makes absolutely no sense to me. And I would say, and I mean this honestly, not fluff, I am so impressed by McMinnville's policies in so many areas, but this just leaves me speechless. And I'd also say, check with, visit mcminnville.com. The hotel occupancy rate for all of 2021 was 63%. Now, I realize there was the COVID factor, that certainly has some impact, but I'd say you can be very visitor-friendly and still not have any idea why we're approving short-term rentals. So I would say, the 50 people who signed the petition, the neighborhood all along 21st Street is strongly in support of this. I'd ask the question, could we not have targets set for occupancy rates and only approve new STRs when the occupancy rates get to a certain high level and we say, oh, we need more short-term rentals because we need more places available? Could we not increase the distance between short-term rentals to reassure neighborhoods? Could we not ban short-term rentals in certain residential neighborhoods? Could we not do some things that would assure that we would have consistent neighborhoods? My wife and I, several years ago, went for our anniversary to Cinquetera, and we were assured that it was going to be a charming area with lots of Italian fishermen, but the truth was, the fishermen were all gone. It was all short-term rentals, with only a few fishing boats left.
If you could conclude your thoughts.
We'd hate to see McMinnville be like that. So that's my spiel. I'm counting on you to do the right thing, and I believe you will.
Next, we have Alexandra King-Stang.
On Zoom or in the audience?
On Zoom.
All right. Thank you, Alexandra. Please go ahead.
Sorry about that. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Alexandra King-Stang. I live at 245 Northwest 16th Street in McMinnville. Just wanted to join and echo my support for the moratorium. I live right by Memorial Elementary, and I walk my dogs in this neighborhood every day, and so pay attention to the homes that have signs pop up for hearings for short-term rentals. And I've seen several sort of join that fleet over the last year or so, and I can't help but notice that many of them fall into the smaller size, you know, the two, three-bedroom homes close to elementary schools that could be, you know, potentially accessible family housing. And I hate to see those opportunities go away in favor of additional rentals. I'll keep this short, I think there were a lot of other wonderful points raised, and I just wanted to echo those, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Has anyone else signed up?
Yes, next we have Heather Miller.
Thank you. Heather, we're ready when you are.
All right. I didn't actually anticipate speaking to this, but I wanted to just weigh in as a citizen, not in my role of the downtown. But I do think it's important to take a pause and consider our growth as a city as it relates to tourism. I lived in Maui, Hawaii for three years and have watched people being forced out of homes and the places they grew up and have lived because of tourism. And while I value tourism in my business, it's also a challenge to get people to come work here and have affordable housing. And I think a moratorium that gives time to consider how we move forward with short-term rentals and balance that as a city to ensure that people can continue to live here and work here is really important. So I'm always in support of taking a pause and taking some time to find the best solution that fits our needs as a community.
Thank you very much. Has anyone else signed up, Claudia?
Nope, that was everyone.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify this evening?
Oh, it looks like William Sky just raised his hand.
All right, thank you, William Sky on Zoom. We're ready for your testimony.
Hi, my name is William Sykes, can you hear me?
We can hear you, please go ahead.
Thank you. I live in 350 Northwest 7th Street here in McMinnville. And wow, what impressive testimony from the people of McMinnville, stepping up, having their voice heard. Thank you, council people, for listening to our voice. I support the moratorium. I think we need to take a better look at this, and we need to slow down a little bit. Some of the testimony earlier went just explaining, you know, 600 feet every short-term rental, then to down to 200 feet. Some of the other testimony referenced ordinance violations in the existing short-term rentals. I think I have a short testimony, but I think what I struggle with lately the most is that our esteemed Planning Commission has multiple members who either own short-term rentals or who have owned short-term rentals in the past. And I question how objective those folks can be moving forward, designing the rules and the laws around short-term rentals. So with that, I thank you, I appreciate this discussion, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else on Zoom that would like to testify? If so, please raise your hand or alert Claudia in the chat at this time.
I don't see anyone else.
Thank you. Is there any councillor that would like anything clarified regarding any testimony? This concludes our public testimony for this evening. Does the staff have anything that they would like to add to the record at this time? Or does City Council have any additional questions for city staff?
I have a question.
Yes, Councillor Payne.
Sorry. It does not appear to me that the proposed ordinance is distinctive between short-term rentals and resident occupied short-term rentals.
Thank you. Planning Director Richards?
So the it's for permits for short-term rentals, which includes resident occupied short-term rentals. So the moratorium is issuing permits altogether for both types of short-term rentals. And if we need to make a motion that menes that and clarifies that, we can. Short-term rentals are defined in our code, and then we have the division underneath them, a short-term and resident occupied short-term.
Have your question answered, satisfied?
Yes, thank you.
Is there any other member of council that has any additional questions? Councillor Gary?
Director Richards, if, can you speak to a little about the work plan going forward? If this moratorium passes, some of the impetuses you've stated is to spend time to work on the policy. What would be the work plan to do that in this time?
So we do have a couple of planning commissioners who have already been doing research on this in the past couple of months, and putting together a research packet. If this moratorium passes, we will then start creating the work sessions with the Planning Commission and working through that. And then, based on how far they get with that, they could choose to have open houses and engage other people. They could choose to put the project advisory committee together. It's going, the first work session we'll have is really talking about how we want to walk through this discussion. And then, based on that, we'll create a calendar for it. And so I'm recommending to them that they don't try to solve it in the four months, because that's what's allowed in the law for the moratorium. If we can't get it solved in the four months, let's go for an extension.
Thank you.
And to give you an example, I think it's Clatsop County is the other entity in Oregon that put a moratorium on short-term rental permits. And they may have taken a year and a half to work through the process. I think they had two extensions.
Thank you. Any other councillor, Chenoweth?
Yeah, Director Richards, since you brought that up, when we start going through that process, is Clatsop County one that we might use for? process, is Clatsop County one that we might use for a model?
I don't know. I was looking at what they've, you know, it's a county, so it's a slightly different situation than the city, and, and they had a, they were looking at impact in different specific areas. We could look at it that way in the city in terms of different specific areas. My suggestion would be that we, one, identify what the issues are and what the city wants to achieve moving forward, and then, then look at how other cities have gotten to that sort of goal. So, do we want to eliminate short-term rentals altogether? They do serve a purpose. You know, it's interesting to me because a lot of people who testify against them use them when they travel to other communities. So, the question would be, do we want to eliminate them altogether? Do we want to just allow them in commercial zones and rely on that inventory to serve the purpose of lodging? Do we want to increase the spacing buffer to allow, to allow them in residential zones, but not as many, especially in the pressured neighborhoods? Those are all questions we need to ask ourselves as we walk through this process. I would caution against, I don't believe this is going to solve an affordable housing issue. It's not a lot of units, and many of the units that we're seeing that are selling in the market for short-term rentals are, are more expensive homes. We do see pressure on some of the, some of the neighborhoods that were brought up today that because of their proximity to the downtown, there's been pressure there for short-term rentals, and those have historically been more affordable housing. But I'm, I'm, this, this isn't, this isn't solving our affordable housing issue. That's another issue we have to tackle.
Thank you. Any other counselors have questions of staff at this time? I will now close the public hearing. We're now moving to reports from counselors on committees and board assignments. I'm going to start this portion by handing out your future or from this moment forward assignments as well. I'm just going, I'm going to do it verbally, and we'll send it out in writing as well. Our council president, Adam Garvin, will continue his service on the Airport Commission and on YCOM, and he will add Visit McMinnville to his committee assignments. Counselor Manke will continue her service on the Audit Committee, the McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission, and as a board liaison with YCAP. Counselor Gary, to my left, will continue his service with DEIAC, will continue his service with MACPAC, even though that group is not meeting at this time, and in addition, will become the council liaison to MCM, our Community Media, and also to the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. Counselor Chenoweth will continue his service with the Economic Vitality Leadership Council and will add the Parkway Committee to his committee assignments. Counselor Peralta, who's not here today, will continue his service with the Council of Governments and will be added to the Historic Landmarks Committee. Counselor Payne will begin service with the Audit Committee and with the Landscape Review Committee. And I will continue my service with the McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission. I will also join the Oregon Mayors Association, the Midwell Ammit Valley Advisory Transit Commission, and Yamhill Community Emergency Management. And with that, we will now go to our counselors for their committee and board assignments. And we will start on my right this evening with Counselor Manke.
The McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission. I'll just briefly touch on what I'm supposed to be doing, and that would include following up on the construction excise tax and methods and how we're going to assess that and other financial issues involved in that. And I'm looking to pull that committee meeting together within the next week, so.
Wonderful.
That informs you. YCAP, I don't really have anything of importance to report at this point. I'll have a meeting, a finance committee meeting next week, and the following week we'll have a, another, another board meeting. I will report at that time.
Thank you very much. Counselor Gary.
Not much to report. I'm looking forward to a DEIAC meeting this week, in which we'll spend a bulk of the time talking about getting the Parks and Rec, uh, next month? In the, in an upcoming month, we will be talking about getting the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee up and going, as well as some other things. So, kind of in between meetings, so nothing else to report. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Chenoweth.
My, my last meeting with the Historic Landmarks Committee was this, was the seventh, and we, well, they got through the requests for changes to the former Cornerstone Building. So, we are being, this mic's going in and out. We're going along with that process, and pretty soon, we're going to actually have an occupant in there, so.
Thank you. As Counselor Manke touched upon, we met with the McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission at the end of June. We started learning about land acquisition and revolving loans to start looking at the long-term, how the city can continue to assist in affordable housing projects. So, we had a really wonderful presentation from Oregon Housing and Community Services. And, and then, if one were to want our partner reports, they're in the packet. There's probably a four or five-page report from YCAP in there about the scope of services, all the different programs and policies that the city's been involved in and the impact they're making. And it's, it's a very impressive report when you start seeing the numbers of people that are transitioning out of houselessness and into permanent housing through the programs. And there's also information in there about the Stratus Village Build project. So, it's a really great information source. And then, lastly, I knew Congresswoman Bonamici came to meet with our head of affordable housing and head of our housing authority and affordable, YCAP organization, CAP organization. Thank you. Sorry. The post, the slowness of the brain, I apologize for it. So, and had a, and had a really wonderful tour of upcoming Navigation Center, Project Turnkey, and upcoming Stratus Village projects. Okay, now we'll go to Department Head.
Inner Mayor, can I?
Oh, thank you. And Counselor Peralta's report. Thank you. Claudia has a report from Counselor Peralta.
The Mid Valley Council of Government Legislative Policy Committee continues to meet on a bi-weekly basis. Counselor Peralta will be presenting this week to Oregon's Infrastructure Cabinet to make the case for emergency funding for additional statewide planning capacity as a bridge to a longer-term funding from the legislature, at least through the grant period covered by the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. He supports the consent agenda and will allow the city to pursue liens for corrective actions on unmaintained properties. He strongly supports the collective bargaining agreement with the MPA or McMinnville Police Department. He would like to express his gratitude to all members of the city bargaining team and police association, Teamster Local 223, for resolving this contract quickly, fairly, and amicably. This is one of the most difficult times I have seen for policing in my lifetime. I am deeply grateful for the professionalism of our police department across the entire organization. I urge my colleagues to unanimously approve all items on the, on tonight's agenda.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Chenoweth, you needed to add something?
Yeah, I did this last time to the HLC, and I'm sorry. One of the things that they've been doing is trying to engage the public in the historic landmarks we have in McMinnville and the history of McMinnville, and part of what they have done has been doing a speaker tour. On June 16th, Michael Hafner spoke to, about the history, history of transportation. Coming up on July 26th, Tiffany Henness will be speaking about the little-known Chinese and Asian-American history. And then, on August 3rd, at Buchanan Cellars between 5:30 and 7:00, Mary Beth Branch will be speaking as well about the historic, the role of historic preservation in our community.
Wow. Great. Thank you. Wonderful. To Department Heads, let's start over here. Mr. Burke.
Just one thing to note, now that I'm back from vacation, had a chance to review the cybersecurity insurance, the discussion from the previous meeting, and start diving into those applications after I have a chance to talk with our city manager and finance director. We'll bring some information back for you.
Thank you. Mrs. Snarrows.
Nothing to report.
Chief Scales.
Nothing to report.
Director Muir.
I do have a few things to report. I'm happy to let the council know that summer, our Summer Fund program received a $40,000 grant that we are going to be able to use for scholarships to our camps, materials and supplies, staffing, and also adaptive recreation materials. And speaking of Summer Fund, in the two and a half weeks since we started it, we have served over 1,000 people in McMinnville at our programs. Very excited about that. That does not include the almost 300 popsicles that we gave away yesterday because of the heat, and I want to thank Counselor Manke for coming out to Discovery Meadows and helping us give out popsicles for folks. And if I don't see you this Friday at Joe Dancer to watch the Spider-Man movie, I hope since there's no city council meeting next week, that you will join us at City Park for, at 6:30 for Shades of Huey, which is a Huey Lewis cover band. So, hope to see you next Tuesday.
Thank you very much. And interim city attorney, Walt Gowell. Mr. Gowell.
Nothing to report.
Thank you very much. We will now move into our consent agenda, where we'll consider Resolution Number 2022-54, a resolution approving code compliance liens on properties to recover unpaid corrective action costs and civic penalty citations. Is there any counselor that would like to discuss this or, or make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would move to approve it.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Manke and a second by Counselor Chenoweth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes four to zero. We'll now consider a request to permit a waiver of the noise ordinance from Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints for July 16th, 2022. I'd like to call on city recorder Claudia Sisnaros to present the agenda topic, and Ryan Harris is present to answer any questions about the event.
Thank you, Inner Mayor and members of the council. This event is a music event held by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, scheduled for July 16th, 2022, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. The event coordinator, coordinator Ryan Harris, is requesting a noise permit waiver, which will allow the increase in noise of amplified music for the event. Under Municipal Code 8 dot 10 dot 260, the council can grant a waiver for noise through the permit, and the permit will allow noise to be outside of what normally would be allowed under this section. If approved by council, the city manager will write a letter letting them know that the waiver's been granted. Because of the short turnaround between the event and this meeting, we previously did advise Mr. Harris to notify the affected neighbors about the potential of this event and the noise level. If you have any questions for me, let me know, or Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Does any counselor have any questions? No, thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
No move.
Good. Great, I'm going to, I'm going to assume that was a motion to approve.
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve. I have a motion by Counselor Gary and a second by Counselor Manke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes four to zero. We're now going to consider Resolution Number 2022-53, a resolution ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the city of McMinnville and the McMinnville Police Association, the MPA, for the period starting July 1st, 2022. I'd like to call on our police chief, Matt Scales, to present.
Thank you, interim mayor Drapkin. Members of the council refer you to the staff report. This action's in consideration of a collective bargaining agreement that was reached between the city and the MPA affiliated with Teamsters Local 223. The current collective bargaining agreement between the city and the MPA is set to expire. It already has. The two sides began negotiating a number of months ago, and I'm pleased to report that both sides tentatively agreed to the, the contract, June 14th of '22. Members of the MPA have met, reviewed the proposed contract, but was conducted the MPA unanimously. Amazing, in my opinion. That's ratified the proposed contract. City council now must consider the approval of the agreed-upon contract, which will authorize the city manager execute the new contract, which would go into place on the 22nd, or excuse me, July 1st of '22, and will run through June 30th of '25. The wage increase is consistent with the earlier guidance the city council provided and ensures wages are in alignment with the market and with the comparable jurisdictions in Oregon. Lastly, I want to thank negotiation parties as the chief, and I've been in the, at the PD for 29, almost 30 years now. Never had a contract that was agreed to prior to the end of the contract actually expiring. So, amazing work by former HR manager Kylie Bear, city recorder Claudia Sisnaros was amazing, and PD Support Services Manager Linda Gardner. I'd also like to thank the members of the MPA, Mike Mann, the Teamsters rep, Josh Sheets is the MPA president, Evan Birch, the vice president of the MPA, and Marcy Peters is the secretary treasurer. And staff recommends that the city council move to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement proposed under Resolution 22-53.
Wonderful. Thank you, chief, and Claudia, and everybody involved in the bargaining and for bringing this to us. It was greatly appreciated. I am now open for council discussion. I'll start at this end on this. Counselor Chenoweth, do you have anything?
No, I'm just bating to be, make the motion.
Okay, I understood, and everybody's on notice. Counselor Gary, would you have any notes to add?
Just pass my appreciation on to the women, men, and canine that roam those hallowed halls. Thank you. Good work.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Manke? Anything to, any discussion?
I have to add commendations for everyone involved in the bargaining group and the police department.
Yes. Wonderful. And Counselor Payne?
I will second the motion that Chenoweth hasn't made yet.
Oh, okay. Well, I would like to ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-53.
It's just that we also appreciate, appreciate the police department that we're jumping on this to want to show our support. I move to approve Resolution Number 22, 2022-53.
Second. Wonderful. I have a motion by Counselor Chenoweth and a second by Counselor Payne. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. The resolution passed four to zero. We're now going to consider the first reading with a possible second reading, reading of ordinance number 5118, an ordinance establishing a moratorium on the issuance of short-term rental permits from September 1st, 2022, to December 29th, 2022. Does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? We will now consider the matter of ordinance number 5118. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will the city attorney Walt Gowell please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance Number 5118, an ordinance establishing a moratorium on the issuance of short-term rental permits from September 1, 2022, to December 29, 2022.
Thank you. I would now like to call on our Planning Director, Heatherd Richards, to present.
I don't have anything else to add except for that we are going to be accepting pending complete applications for short-term rentals through August 1, 2022. Those will be processed. The reason for that is it does take us 30 days to process a permit, and we will not, if this passes, we won't be processing permits after September 1. So, we want to let the community know that.
Thank you. I'll now call for council discussion. Oh, excuse me, I, I have a point of order.
No, I was just going to read Counselor Peralta's.
Oh, Claudia Sisnaros, will you read Counselor Peralta's comments to start us off, please?
With regard to today's With regard to tonight's agenda, I would like to...
Could we, if you're on Zoom, could you please mute yourself, please? Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I lost my thought. With regards to tonight's agenda, I would like to express my support to ordinance 5118, which would put a 120-day moratorium on permitting short-term vacation rentals, housing, and residential quote. Our city housing crisis has reached a point where workforce housing is not attainable in our city. The problem is expected to get worse before it gets better. It is critical that every available property in residential zones be limited to their intended use. These properties are being put to commercial use, but they are not commercial zones. They should not be treated as commercial zones by people who are looking to commoditize our community or live at the expense of housing for those who live and work here. I encourage staff to use the moratorium period to consider refinements to city code that differentiate between owner-occupied vacation rentals and vacation rentals that are run solely as a commercial enterprise, as I believe the former use is more consistent with use in a residential zone and can help local residents remain in their primary residence as our community continues to gentrify.
Thank you, Claudia. Is there any other council discussion? Counselor Chenoweth?
Well, I just have to put this on record. I'm probably going to vote in favor of this moratorium, but it's against kind of some underlying feelings that I have about the issue. I struggle when we start getting in the middle of private property rights. I struggle when we start putting our hands on the scale of who's going to make money on these units and who's not, and the moratorium's going to do that. It's actually, you know, the comment that was made by one of our testifiers, they were concerned about how somebody who owns such property could be neutral. I could see that, but the opposite direction, I think, may be than what was intended, because if we stop them, those who already have them are in a great financial position to utilize what they already have. And I just, I get leery when we, as a body, step into the middle of that rather than letting market run its course. I think if we have too many, they're going to quit using them. If we have too few, we're going to have more purchased and used. And Heather made a very strong case, and a good case, that this is not going to impact our housing issue. We have a much greater problem, and 58 plus 25 plus 10 on is less than 100 housing units in an area of well over, I don't remember what the number in the packet was, but it's large. So I feel like this is nimbyism at its finest. I feel like it's a solution in search of a problem rather than a real and existent problem that's out there. But I understand the concerns of those that live in the neighborhood, that have to deal with the renters that may be more troublesome than they want to have to deal with. Having lived in a rental neighborhood that was long-term rentals, I know what it's like whether they're short-term or long-term to live next to renters. You never know what you're going to get next time around. So I'm not going to hold this thing up, but I just want to express I have concerns about us stepping in the middle of this.
Thank you, counselor. Are there any other counselors that would like to add discussion at this time?
I agree with Chris. The interference with private property rights is a conflict for me. I understand, though, that every property owner has the right to peaceful enjoyment of their property. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. However, I am not in a position where I would be voting in favor of it as it is written. I, just because of the history of the council and the planning department and kind of the goals of the city and seeing the mixed-use property, or not mixed-use property, but looking to property owners to take advantage of the ability to use accessory dwelling units where it's allowed, I would be in favor of supporting short-term rental moratorium only, with the exception of, like, allowing resident occupied short-term rentals.
Thank you. Is there any additional council discussion, members here? I will take a minute. I do have a very long history with short-term rentals. They, I'll give you my best recollection. I've had some conversation with our planning director, and she dug back through our packets a little bit as we were remembering back over the last many years of how this has come up in conversation. And the first way, and there was background in the packet, but beyond the background that's in the packet, there's some things that I just want to add. The first time this came up, I was on Planning Commission, and I remember it came up specifically because at that time, there was a limitation on short-term rentals, which were almost non-existent. They were being regulated the same as B&Bs were being regulated. And so that did not sit well at the time. And so that came through, and that went through a process, and they were 600 feet apart at the time. And then they went through the Planning Commission process. And at the same time, we were discussing in affordable housing, how we would, as we changed our ADU codes, to make it easier for people to build ADUs, we were simultaneously having the discussion of how do we craft it so that the intent of making it easier to create an ADU doesn't turn it into a short-term rental, so that we're actually creating more housing stock by encouraging or relaxing codes in a way that encourages people to create those ADUs. So actually, the intent, as it came out of the Affordable Housing Committee on its way to Planning Commission, was really to protect ADUs also as rental stock, not as short-term rental stock. So I think that's interesting. Of course, that, as we all know, the intent, it doesn't necessarily matter at this point. What matters is the decision of this body. And so this has gone through a lot of iterations, and we've heard a lot of public comment tonight. Do you think we need a little bit more conversation? Because I do hear some, I do hear our Counselor Payne asking for a change to the ordinance, and I see Counselor Geary over here ready to also add some thoughts. So let's go to you, Counselor Geary, for some additional discussion.
Well, there was a lot there at the last second.
That's all.
No, I would echo your sentiments. I've not as long tenured, but have been on the Planning Commission as this came back through, and I think I was laughed out of the room when I asked Chuck to show me a map of a 1,000-foot buffer, and people thought that was comical. Heather, you remember that? But I would add my voice to the chorus of support for the moratorium currently and expeditiously to allow us time to have longer drawn-out policy conversations around what it is, because, you know, do we want ADUs as short-term rentals, or do we want ADUs to increase density for long-term rentals and long-term housing or full housing stock options and just, you know, flag lot or infill development and all that? Is it, is short-term part of that, or is short-term not part of that? And how do we carve out a, how do we carve out the code to allow for that or to set that aside and let us focus on more long-term, real housing solutions? So I'd be in favor of this as soon as we can to allow us the space and ability to have those longer conversations and make larger impacts to long-term policy.
Okay, so I hear that there's kind of two schools of thought up here right now. I'm just saying for my own clarity. One is to pass the ordinance as presented, that would be a complete moratorium on short-term rentals, starting September 1, for this period of months, to discuss as a whole where short-term rentals will be allowed as the moratorium ends. And then the other school of thought is that we would pass all of this ordinance except for we would pull out residential short-term rentals, and those would not be excluded during this moratorium.
Not the only thing that is included?
Could I ask a clarifying question on that one? I mean, would ADUs be considered that also?
Counselor Payne, do you want to clarify for the council exactly what your intent is with the revisions you want?
It would just be that, I guess, my thought is if I'm the property owner and I have an ADU in my own backyard, I want to be able to rent it in whatever way I want to. And being on-site, I feel like it remedies sort of the consequence and barriers to some of the issues that were brought up, like the parking and the policing and the trash and things like that. So I wouldn't exclude ADUs as a short, maybe I'm saying that backwards. I would not exclude them as a short-term rental. They would, in my mind, I would envision... Well, they're the resident occupant ones.
You want, you want this...
So Mayor Drapkin, can I just provide some clarification?
Yes, please. Yeah, thank you.
So right now, so right now, the city council is not discussing what the new code should be. You're discussing what the moratorium is and why. One of the findings for the moratorium is that by providing a moratorium on the issuance of permits, it frees up time, staff time, to do the research and evaluation work with the Planning Commission on the existing code for what is the appropriate code for this community. Relative to ADUs, those right now in the code are seen as a dwelling unit, just like any other dwelling unit. So if there is, so if the ADU in its entirety is rented out as a short-term rental, it is considered a short-term rental. It's not a resident occupied short-term rental, and the 200-square-foot spacing buffer applies. If the ADU is occupied by somebody as a permanent resident and they rent out a room in it, then it is considered a resident occupied short-term rental. We issue permits for both of those, though, both those actions. So we're still doing the work of issuing permits, and one of your findings under E would need to be revised a little bit, because we have to say, we're saying we don't have the time to do the work on the code unless we remove something else from our work plan entirely, unless we remove the issuance of permits that we're putting time into.
I understand. Counselor Payne, do you understand the...
I understand. So I would support the moratorium as it has been presented.
Okay, is there any other council discussion at this time? Okay, thank you. I would now ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5118 to a second reading.
I would move to approve.
The first reading.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me get a point of order from our...
To vote on the first, because if there's a negative vote, you cannot move it to the second reading.
Yeah.
Yes. So move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 5118, an ordinance establishing a moratorium on the issuance of short-term rental permits from September 1, 2022, to December 29, 2022.
And I second it.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for being out of order, but we now have a motion from Counselor Geary to, on the first reading, and a second from Counselor Manke on the first reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, so the motion passes four to zero. Okay. I'll now ask for, and I did that way because the absence of a vote is the same as an affirmative vote, so just for clarity. So I will now ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5118 to a second reading.
I so move.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Counselor Manke and a second by Counselor Geary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the second one, I do a roll call. And can I just have city attorney Walt Gowell read the ordinance again by title to the second reading?
I think he should read the whole.
Ordinance number 5118, an ordinance establishing a moratorium on the issuance of short-term rental permits from September 1, 2022, to December 29, 2022.
Thank you.
And now I'll do the roll call.
Okay, Claudia, would you like to do a roll call?
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Manke?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Less than emphatic aye.
And then Counselor Payne?
What Chris said.
Aye.
Great, thank you. The motion passes unanimously. I have vote of four to zero. Okay, I will now adjourn the July 12, 2022 council meeting at 8:34 p.m.